I'm smiling.
Hey, how are you?
What's second race? See?
Oh, no. He's missing. Oh, no, he's missing. We don't have.
Okay. But he's one that doesn't perform in our store, right?
Yeah.
So you guys have been working with him on that?
Yeah, we're going to put a committee.
Okay, we're getting my staff.
Is it gonna go good for you?
Anna? Good to see you. Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Dania Beach Regular City Meeting on September the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is seven o'clock PM. I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Ramoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Say hello.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mary Abicor.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. At this time, if we could all bow our heads for a moment of silence. Silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney Bootses, if you would please read our Statement of Decorum. No individual shall make any slanderous or unduly repetitive remarks or engage in any other form of behavior that disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting as determined by the mayor. No individual may speak directly to or address the mayor, city commissioner, or city staff. Comments are to be only directed to the commission as a whole. No clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support of or opposition to a speaker or his or her remarks shall be permitted. No signs or placards shall be permitted in the commission chamber. If any person's conduct, as determined by the mayor, is found to be disruptive or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, the person may be asked by the mayor to leave the commission chambers. If the person does not leave and the conduct persists, the City Police Department will be requested to escort the individual from the city commission chambers. All cellular telephones are to be silenced during the meeting. All persons exiting the commission chambers shall do so quietly. Thank you so much, City Attorney Bootses. Next, we have our budget public hearing item, item three point one. Eve, if you could please read item three point one.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
I saw I'm a lot of names.
Yes, ma'am, you're not a sir. Yes, ma'am. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida relating to the imposition of fire rescue assessments and provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, ratifying, confirming, and supplementing Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-five zero ninety-seven, re-imposing fire rescue assessments with updated assessment rates against assessed property located within the city for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-five, approving the rates of assessment approval of the final assessment roll, providing for a public hearing, providing for effective adoption of resolution conflicts, severability, and an effective date. This is a finance item.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Guzman, CPA and the CFO for the City of Dania Beach. Before we get started on the explanation of the fire assessment, which is our first budget item, I'd like to thank the administration and the city manager for working with us with this presentation over the weekend to fine tune the details and also to clarify some misleading information that has been going around social media. And with that, let's just get started. Just a brief information about our administration and our finance department. This budget is a compilation of about over fifty years of experience between the administration and the finance department. I myself am an MPA, I'm a CPA, I'm a board member of the South Florida Chapter for the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm accessible to all city directors all throughout Broward County and Miami. So I'm more than welcome to answer any questions that you have at the end of this presentation. And with that, let us go over what the fire assessment means for the City of Dania Beach. It's no secret that the City of Dania Beach has heavily invested unprecedented amounts of money for one of the top priorities for our city commission, and that is public safety. We invested in equipments, we invested in trucks, we invested specifically in personnel. Now, personnel does not come for free. It comes at a cost. The city has added about twenty-eight public safety personnel, fourteen of which are firefighters. The total cost of our contract for this year is approximately twenty million point six million, excuse me, twenty point six million. We have city firefighter pension contributions we had to meet. All of that is covered by a fire assessment. The fire assessment this year is going from two hundred and forty dollars to two hundred and seventy. That is a change of twenty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. And if you do the average per month, it's about two dollars and forty-eight cents. And I'd like to show a little graph of where we've been and where we're at today with public safety. The blue bars are our police officers, which back in two thousand and twenty-two were about eighty-seven. And you can see that throughout all time, they have increased all the way to fourteen officers. And now, fire rescue, it's the same thing. We actually added four firefighters this fiscal year around April, which led the number to seventy-seven. Mayor, if you can proceed.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would.
Okay, I saw Ms. Chaliford, which you're on the.
I'll turtle my way up there.
You'll come on, we'll wait for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. No offense, this is the last place I would like to be. But I support all these people here and what they're going to tell you about your budget.
Ms. Chaliford, if you could please state your name and well, for the for the your name and address for the record, please.
For the record. My name is Brenda Lee Chaliford. I live in Dania Beach. I see it, I live it, I don't love it. Bear with me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Take your time.
I incorporate by reference my memorandum to you.
Ms. Chaliford, the city clerk is requesting your address.
Well, you know what? I don't like to advertise that because I'm afraid of retribution. So I'm not going to do that.
We have it on the paper, I believe. You certainly do. Yes, we have it on file. Thank you. Go ahead.
I incorporate by reference the memos I sent to you all August thirtieth and September seventh. And my memo to you last year at this time, you might remember the one that I titled, "You Can Put Lipstick on a Pig, But It's Still a Pig." Last year at this time, I challenged you to show us how much you could save. If I correctly remember, it was then Mayor Ryan who accepted the challenge. So that begs my question, how much did you save? From the looks of the current budget, nowhere do I see relief for the taxpayers. Instead, I see the bloat continues. For example, we have a bloated number of staff and bloated salaries. Please do not misunderstand me. Some of our staff are excellent at what they do, and they probably don't get paid enough. However, some of our staff are consuming too many of our resources. Some of our staff deserve our confidence. Some of them I have no confidence in. Going to have to skip through the part about when I was looking who to vote for, what I looked for. It doesn't exist anymore. So why are we here? There seems to be a disconnect between taxpayers' needs and wants and what is being done. We are here because we are overtaxed, underserved, and now overburdened. We are here because we need relief. We're here because we want you to change the path you are on to the path we thought we were going to be on. All of this said, Commissioners, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, please get a grip of the reins. It feels like it feels like the tail is wagging the dog. The analogy is, you are the dog. Staff is the tail. Please, you set the policy guidance and direction, staff implements it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chaliford, for your comments. I did see you have another comment from Mr. DeRosa. Did you fill out a form, sir? You can come and state your name and an address for the record, please.
Sean DeRosa, four oh eight Southeast Fifth Street. Just want to verify and confirm this is for item one for the budget?
Yes, this is item three point one.
Thank you. Just want to start off by sharing that in April twenty-second, our city manager had shared a memo with you all.
Mr. DeRosa, we need your name and address for the record.
Sean DeRosa, four oh eight Southeast Fifth Street. Our city manager, April twenty-second, had shared a nice memo with you all saying that we're going to be incurring a substantial increase in BSO costs of five million per year. But the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six would be very be a very challenging year. However, cutting costs, generating revenues, and continuing to think outside of the box is the game plan as the priority. And this will come up one through five tonight. When I was looking at the assessment for how it's created pertaining to fire services, I saw the city broke property and acreage down by categories. Residential got a fixed fee. Landowners got a fixed fee of seventy-two dollars per acre versus two hundred and seventy dollars for a residential owner. However, when I saw commercial and industrial, it was broken down by per square foot. So out of curiosity, I divided seventy-two dollars by forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet, which is the square footage of an acre. And I was shocked and surprised that our our land investors aren't even paying a one cent per square foot. However, when I did the math for an average parcel lot size for a single-family residential home of seven thousand square feet, and you know our parcels are anywhere from probably five thousand to nine thousand, but average of seven thousand, when you divide it two hundred and seventy dollars by an average parcel size for residential homeowner, the residents are paying four cents per square foot. So it seemed like it was kind of out of whack. When you when you look at the two-prong approach in terms of the special benefits that are required to be considered to issue an assessment, I just want to read those special benefits into the record for you all. Continuous availability of immediate response to fire, provision of first responder medical aid to protect life and safety of occupants, enhanced property value marketability of and/or ability to develop property, protection against spread of fire to neighboring parcels, increased use and enjoyment of the parcel derived from continued immediate available comprehensive fire protection, enhanced marketability and value of the parcel when compared to similarly configured parcel for which fire protection services are unavailable. I was confused. Can you restudy why the landowner investors are not paying a few pennies more per square foot and make this a little bit more proportional to what the residents are paying per square foot of their parcels? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. DeRosa. We please will want you to adhere to the rules of decorum. Next, is there anybody else who wants to speak for item three point one? All right, public comments are closed for this item. Director Guzman, we will move on to item three point two. Eve, if you could please read item three point two. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm motionless. I'm ready, I'm moving on. Can I have a motion to pass item three point one? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pass item three point one.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item three point one passes unanimously. Now, we will move on to item three point two. Eve, if you could please read item three point two.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission relating to the provision of solid waste service assessments in the City of Dania Beach, re-imposing solid waste service assessments against assessed property located within the boundaries of the city for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-five, approving the rate of assessment assessment roll, providing for a public hearing, conflicts, and an effective date, also a finance item. Director Guzman?
Yes, I'd like to briefly discuss the solid waste assessment before we make a final decision and open it for public comment. Our subsequent assessment fee is going from three hundred and ninety dollars to four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. This is to accommodate the increase in solid waste cost for the city. The equivalent of that fee is about a dollar and eighty-six cents per month. The city is also this year using reserves to subsidize that value. So this is what is called a self-sustaining fund. And when there is reserves in the fund, we utilize them to reduce the burden on any fees or any assessments. And that is what we did this fiscal year. We assigned about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We cannot use all of the reserves because if there is an emergency, we won't have any reserves. But we're prudent enough to use whatever we can, which is this year was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, to subsidize that value. It could have been higher. However, the city was trying to be conservative in this cost, we subsidized a hundred and thirty-two, bringing it from three ninety to four hundred and twelve for the whole year. So it's a change of twenty-two dollars for the whole year.
Does that conclude your?
That concludes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Director Guzman, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Ms. Chaliford? What a surprise. This may be my last try, folks, so I'm going to do it. And I'm going to speak my mind to you. We appreciate your thoughts. Once again, Brenda Chaliford, I live in Dania Beach. Once again, we need relief. It's my understanding that these assessment items only have one reading. So this is our only shot. To beg with you, to plead with you. Roll it back. And I'm not talking right now about the military. I'm talking about the amount I'm charged for someone to come pick up my trash. I don't know what else to say other than please, continue the item so you can really think about it and find different ways to give us some relief on these assessments. It's too much. It's reminding me of, I think it's the prices, right? Where they have a game where when you think the number is too high, you say, that's too much. These assessments are too much. We don't have any more room in our budget. And then when we look at the spending here, we definitely don't have any room in our budget for it. So please, remember what you said when you were campaigning. Remember you were watching the taxpayers' backs. This is not evidence of that. This is so contrary to what I was told. And how stupid of me to believe what I was told. Please. Tonight, you'll pass it. Oh, well, too bad for us. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chaliford. Is there anyone else? Ms. Ray Lair, if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Ray Lair, five six five zero Southwest Thirty-second Terrace in the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. Well, I don't know why I have to pay an increase in garbage. We have our own garbage system in the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. So I don't want to pay twenty-two bucks that you consider chump change. To me, it's not chump change, that's a lunch out a month. You know, you act like, oh, you have money, we're going to get it. That's annoying. I know this isn't part of the thing, but I have absolutely no confidence in this administration. They, you know, they look down on the taxpayers. We're like the cash cow for them to do whatever they want. And I want to thank Joyce especially for voting no on the increase in density on that property where the Hollywood Bank building used to be. But I feel like you're spitting in the wind with these people up here. They don't listen to anybody but city. They don't listen to anybody but city, and they always come doing what's best for the city, the city, the city. Well, guess what? The city is the people, not the staff. It's the city. It's not the people. It's not the developments, developers. It's the people of Dania Beach. And I campaigned for a lot of you, and I believed in my heart that you would do what was right for Dania Beach. But obviously, you're not doing it, except for one up there, Joyce. Thank you very much. Okay, so that's basically it. Now I'm gonna think of myself. I don't want to pay 22 bucks more in assessment for a service that I don't get. I have my own service where I live that I pay for. So I'd like to be removed. I think the whole Estates of Fort Lauderdale should be removed from that $22 chump change assessment. And so far, in just 17 minutes, with the fire and the water, it's gone up $56. Oh, excuse me, 22 minutes, it's gone up $56. 29 for fire, 22 for water. You know, it's not fair. It's not fair to the taxpayers. It's not fair to individuals. Most of your citizens here, a lot of them are retired, like me. I'm retired. I'm a widower, widow. You know, I don't work. I'm disabled. You know, this money doesn't grow on trees for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layer. I do want to clarify with our CFO that this is 22, 32 per year for the entire year. Okay. Next, Mr. DeRosa, please state, well, we have stated your name and address for the record.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast Fifth Street. The one concern I wanted to share is that there appears to be some repeat violators. A picture says a thousand words where we have homeowners with four containers out at the roadway that regularly get picked up. And that was today, and that wasn't even recycling for today. So I always hear you guys talk about bad actors and enforcement. I have brought that to our city staff's attention. I never got a response back. So when we start looking at fees increasing, does that concern you, Ms. Garcia? Does that concern you elected officials that we're supposed to have one recycling receptacle, one trash receptacle, and this person regularly puts out four and doesn't even follow the recycling collection date? Is that something that we should look at for enforcement to try to keep our costs down not only this fiscal year, but for the next 10 years, for the next 20 years? The other concern I wanted to bring to your all's attention is vacation rentals. They appear to be the only business that gets their trash and recycling subsidized by the residents. I don't know any other business tax receipt parcel that gets their trash and sanitation recycled. So I was wondering, can you look at that? Why are the residents subsidizing businesses in a single-family residential community? You've increased their occupancy beyond 10. We all know they generate a lot more trash than their normal residents that are homesteaded in the community. And I thought that's something that you should look at to see if we're lawfully allowed to either have them pay twice as much for the assessment, three times, four times, but something to offset the burden on our residents. We've put up with the over-dense development. We've put up with losing the quiet peaceful enjoyment of our neighborhood. When I bought my home 25 years ago, I didn't think I was gonna buy it next to a motel. And I believe 250 other residents that bought their homes didn't think they were buying next to a motel. So whatever relief that you guys can study, I think would be greatly appreciated by the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Do I have anyone else from the public that would like to speak on item 3.2? Seeing none, we will close. Okay, Mr. Cody McCall.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Cody McCall. I live at 33 Southeast 12th Street. I brought a little friend to hold my iPad tonight. You can see him. He's a little round and he's bloated, and I think he would make a good cover for the budget because bloated seems to be the theme. I come to you tonight as a friend and a neighbor. Many of you already know me as I'm the CFO of another city lowering the millage rate, as we did tonight. In the last 48 hours, nearly 20,000 of you have interacted with my social media posts about this budget. That tells me I'm not alone in these concerns. Yet I could not help but notice the tension when I walked into this room. It reminds me of Athens, where citizens once gathered in democratic assemblies like this. But instead of governing with discipline, they built bloated budgets, flooded them through unsustainable revenues, and then burdened their own people with crushing taxes. Trust eroded, resentment grew, and soon they condemned Socrates, not for crimes, but for questions. Those choices weren't justice. They were arrogance, masquerading as judgments, and they marked the beginning of democracy's decline. And what do we see here? Since 2020, Dania Beach has grown full-time staff from 155 to 211, a 36% increase. Yet in the same period, how much did our population grow? 6%. Total expenses have surged from $70 million in 2020 to $157 million today, a 123% increase. Inflation hasn't doubled, but our budget has. A budget balanced on the backs of high taxes, it's not true balance. Property tax revenues tells the same story. In 2020, the city collected $14 million. By 2024, that number exploded to $37.5 million, with next year likely over $40 million. The millage rate hasn't moved, but the residents know the truth. Flat millage with rising values, it's still a tax hike. The Packet calls this a balanced budget, a blueprint for our continued prosperity. But how can you call it prosperity when it's bloat extorting from struggling senior citizens? Next year, Florida voters may be asked to repeal property taxes altogether. I read a statistical analysis today showing up to 87% of Broward voters approve of property tax repeal with a 5% margin of error. Will you change their minds tonight? And I know like Socrates, I may face an ill fate for daring to question this budget.
Please wrap it up, Mr. McCall.
I will.
Thank you.
And who am I after all, just as seasoned accountant of over 15 years to question this budget? So I ask you, in the spirit of Socrates, will you give us a reason to say no to property tax repeal? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Do I have anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on item 3.2? Seeing none, then the public comments are closed, and I will seek a motion from the commissioner. Is there any discussion from the commission or a motion? Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'd just like to make one comment and make sure, I want to answer one of the questions that was asked earlier about people with extra cans out in their yard. You can request extra cans and you pay for it yourself directly to Waste Management. I do that. So my household has a couple of extra cans, but I also do pay that amount out of my own pocket on my own by choice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Any other comments from the commission? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to approve item 3.2.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan to approve motion 3.2, I mean, item 3.2. Do I have a second? Second. Have a second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, item 3.2 passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3.3. Eve, if you would please read item 3.3.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach relating to the provision of stormwater management services in the city, imposing and re-imposing stormwater assessment against property located within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, approving the rate of assessment, the assessment role, providing for a public hearing, conflicts, and an effective date. This is a finance item.
I'd like to give a broad definition about our stormwater assessment fee, which has no increase this fiscal year, part of which it's standing the same to be able to meet our bond covenants. As the city knows, we have funded major projects throughout the city, again, major investments, unprecedented amounts, which are worth more than $30 million just in a given year. We have massive drainage problems throughout the city. The city is 121 years old. None of that comes for free. Regardless of all of that, the city is still maintaining a flat $120 for the year. Also, the city is exploring all types of grants to be able to fund all of these critical projects. So the money just not just come from this assessment, it doesn't come from taxpayers. It comes also from granting agencies who are supporting our projects. See what Dania Beach is doing. They see the shovels on the ground. They see the necessities that we have. And this come from the county and the federal level. So the fee for next fiscal year is a flat 120, just like the year before.
Thank you, Director Guzman. This is a public hearing. Do I have anybody from the public that wishes to speak for or against this item? I will go ahead and recognize Ms. Chalifor first.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me. Good job, Cody. Thank you. I can pay for a bunch of cans and add to the system. It's pretty disgusting, actually. Brenda Chalifor, I live in Dania Beach. I presume, by the way, I just want to remind you, last year you doubled that stormwater master plan fee, and quite frankly, it's a hit to my budget. My meager budget. Stupid me doing all the pro bono work I did. But that's what I'm left with. This stormwater master plan. S. W. M. P. Stick an A in the middle. What do you get? Swamp. That's what I have in my neighborhood. I don't have a stormwater master plan. I don't even see it on your plan. There's no plan. What the heck am I paying for? Do you pay for things you don't get? Does that make sense? I just cannot comprehend this. On top of that, if you continue to allow developments to put their outfall in your outfall system, it's going to implode. Look at Fort Lauderdale. You just did it at your last meeting. That fabulous, outrageous Citibank development of rental houses. Rental houses? What are you nuts? I just don't get it. And he's gonna pump his water in your outfall, and you're gonna push more crap out into the ocean. I don't get it, and those pipes are gonna fail. What is the status of those pipes? How much longer can you push stuff through those pipes? We're moving forward with these things without having done the correct planning, and you're charging the heck out of us for it, and there's no benefit to be derived. I just, it just boggles my mind. I thought we had smarter people than this up there. I'm relying on you to carry, to do our bidding, to carry the water. It's not happening, and I just don't understand the disconnect. But you continue in tax and spend. And like Cody predicts, and I predict as well, there will be no more homestead taxes. Good luck then. Change your course before it's much, much too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chalifor. We're gonna adhere to the rules of decorum, and that will be my last time. We're gonna have to have, I'm a classroom teacher first, and we must obey the rules and the rules of decorum. At this time, Mr. DeRosa?
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast Fifth Street. Just go back to Ms. Garcia's memo. I believe in you, even though you may think I don't. Cutting costs, generating revenue, continuing to think outside the box is the game plan. So again, when it comes to the sewer water impact fees, have we been doing it right? Are we leaving money on the table? I don't know. I'm sure you'll give us an explanation. Since it's a special assessment with the two-prong approach, special benefits, the mythology, the case law that supports it, if we have more traffic coming through the short-term rentals, could the short-term rentals be subsidizing this stormwater assessment as a revenue-generating option? Just like looking at the trash. I look at short-term rentals as that's a business that's gone into the community that they are benefiting enormously financially, making $10,000, $20,000 a month. Maybe there's some way through the special assessment process that maybe they can offset it a little bit more than the residents. I'm just asking. I don't know. And then I would just ask the mayor and the commissioners, I'm misinformed, but pertaining to the trash receptacles, I can pay the trash hauler for an additional receptacle, and they're gonna charge me just for the receptacle, or I'm gonna get a new charge based on the volume of that receptacle on a monthly basis? If you could please share some information. And one thing I did leave off that a lot of my residential friends have shared in the community is, I guess the contractors have figured out a way to time our bulk pickup. So the plumbers, you know, the big stuff where they don't want to dispose of it on their own, they come over to their buddy's house in the community, and they dump every bulk pickup. Are we tracking it just like when we're picking up from residential, there's four receptacles versus two receptacles? Are we tracking that? And if we tracked it and enforced it, I was told code enforcement said it's like a huge fine if contractors are dumping their bulk on our residential parcels to get free pickup of their contractor work. So my friend told me it wasn't being diligently enforced. And again, is that something we should look at diligently enforcing to offset these increases? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Do I have anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on item 3.3? I have Mr. McCall and Ms. Layer. So go ahead, Mr. McCall. Send your, a little closer.
Good evening again.
Name and address for the record again, please. Go ahead.
Cody McCall, 33 Southeast 123. Some of you may not know my background. I'm a career CFO, especially in government, so this is sort of my subject matter expertise. Especially whenever we're talking about the stormwater assessments, I understand those bond covenants very well. In fact, I come from a city that received AAA bond ratings for that. I also understand that these systems are supposed to be self-sustainable from the user fees. Whenever we're relying on property taxes or non-advalorem assessments to cover that because the user fees don't cover it, we're not following the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Ms. Layer, would you like to come up and state your name once again for the record, please?
Ray Layer.
Could you pull the microphone down so we can hear?
Ray Layer, Southeast, 5650 Southwest 32nd Terrace in the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. I remember last year, when the stormwater, it was brought up that they were gonna increase the stormwater by just small change, $4 and something a month. Like, don't eat at McDonald's once a month to cover your costs for the stormwater. Once again, chump change to you, you know? So you keep chump changing us away. It's really getting on my nerves. And the stormwater, I go to Publix here on Griffin Road. Every time it rains, the parking lot of Publix is flooded. Soon it's going to be up to the door of Publix, and I think when we get a big storm, that development there on Thirtieth, that's going to flood Thirtieth Avenue. We won't even be able to get to Publix. To keep building, building, building. And I was talking to my sister today, and in Pennsylvania, you get assessed for stormwater drainage based on your land. If you're concrete, asphalt, you pay more. Well, I want to know what these developers pay. What, what is their stormwater assessment? Whenever they build from street to street, front to back, street to street, like that thing over here by City Hall? It goes from grandpa's bakery all the way almost to Sterling Road, from the railroad tracks almost up to US one. And I asked about the trees landscaping around it. That was promised there was going to be landscaping. Well, now there's pencil palm trees, palm trees with trunks the size of my finger with three, four palms coming out, because they can't plant anywhere, there's nowhere to plant. It's all concrete, and they put trees on the roof like that. That really helps. No, it doesn't. That's just stupid. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. They did that with the airport. They put trees on top of the airport, the parking garages. That was their mitigation for the trees they cut down on perimeter road. What is that? That's a ridiculous idea, and I'm sorry to see it here in Dania Beach. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lair. Do I have anyone else from the public that wishes to speak for or against item three point three? Seeing none, the public comment is closed. Do I have a motion from the commission for item three point three? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Make a motion to approve three point three.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Vice Mayor?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion from the commission on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Item three point three passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to item three point four. Eve, if you could please read item three point four.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach as required by the City Charter and section two hundred point sixty-five of the Florida statutes, approving the proposed millage rate necessary to be levied for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five through two thousand and twenty six for operating purposes, establishing the debt millage approved by the electorate, providing for a public hearing when and where objections may be heard and questions concerning the same will be answered, providing for conflicts and an effective date. This is a finance item, and I just need to read a little speech, if you don't mind. This announcement is for tonight's but, uh, hearing for the City of Dania Beach, Florida for fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six. The operating municipal millage rate will be five point nine 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 eight mils, which reflects no change from the city's current fiscal year millage rate. This operating millage rate represents a six point zero three percent increase over the rolled back rate of five point six five eight eight mils, as computed in accordance with the provisions of section two hundred point oh six five one of the Florida statutes. The voter-approved debt service millage rate is zero point zero nine eight five mils in accordance with the provisions of law pursuant to chapter two hundred of the Florida statutes. The city's aggregate millage rate is six point oh nine eight three mils, which includes the five point nine 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 eight mils for operating and the zero point zero nine eight five mils for debt service. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bootsis, Director Guzman.
I'm going to turn this part over to our Deputy Finance Director, Barbara Trinka.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Trinka. I am a city employee, but I'm also a city resident. I just wanted to share that with you. Oh, my, my apologies. A CPA, I'm also an MBA, have a master's in accounting. I also received my master, two master's degrees from University of Florida. So with that said, we, today we have a present, this slide, which basically shows where the city's millage falls in line with other Broward cities. The purpose of this slide isn't to test your vision tonight, okay?
Thank you.
It is simply to show you pictorially where the city falls, right? What works for the City of Dania Beach may not work for another city. But what we can say is that we are the fourteenth lowest out of thirty-one Broward County cities. That's what we can say, right? As we position, we're actually just slightly below the mean, we're actually a little below six, and definitely very close to the median, right? So for the purposes of our millage rate, what's important about this slide is to see where we fall within our sister cities and where we fall. And again, what works for the City of Dania Beach may not work for others. So you can say, oh, well, this one's lower, this one's higher, but the purpose is to show overall where we land, okay? And so just a few pieces, I know we have been saying there's the difference between tax rate increases and everything like that. Just to be very clear, the millage has been the same since fiscal year two thousand and twenty twelve, right? Twenty twenty twelve, our millage rate, we've been very, very consistent, and we've been steadfast in our belief. Even with that, we've increased programming, we've increased infrastructure spending. Even this year, we actually decreased our operating expenses. It's the commitment to the future of this city and our commitment to maintaining that, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Trinka.
Another item we'd like to discuss, it's how much really goes to Dania Beach, right? So we have our assessed values, which yes, they have gone up, the market has gone up. We can't control the market. The city doesn't assign any assessed values to your properties. You actually have to go to the Broward County Property Appraiser if you want to challenge the value of your property. But for the purposes of this avalorin example, the city only gets thirty cents of every dollar that you pay on your property taxes. That means that seventy cents goes to the rest of the taxing authority, like your school board, your Broward County, County, and other agencies, the Children's Council, other districts. That money does not come to Dania Beach. So we're working with thirty cents on the dollar. So what does thirty cents mean, represent for the City of Dania Beach budget? So our city, as may, you may, may not know, is mostly commercial, is more commercial than residential. Out of the forty-six estimated million dollars estimated for FY two thousand and twenty six, only twenty-two point five million comes from our residential properties. That is about forty-eight percent, so less than fifty percent comes from the houses in Dania Beach. Our operating expenditures are about fifty-seven million dollars. This is operating. This is not payroll, this is no transfers, this is no CRA, this is nothing else, just to keep the lights on on your buildings. And these are not something that we can really control. We can't control how much we spend on the power bill. Yes, we can turn off the lights, but at some point we have to turn them on, right? So we need to buy supplies, we need to use our restrooms. All of that is critical for the city. So just operating expenditures with that is what it means in our budget, is fifty-seven point six million dollars. And public safety is a big chunk of that. So the assessment fee that you just passed is just one part of it, and this is the remaining cost of it between police and then the remaining fire. Then you have your operating maintenance, which is about twenty millions, and then there is the geobond debt that was voted back in two thousand and six and two thousand and ten. With that, you'll have a deficit of about ten million dollars, which is being paid for by other revenue streams that we have throughout the city. One thing I wanted to point out also about the debt this year, the debt this year was supposed to go higher to pay the geobond that was again passed in two thousand and six and two thousand and ten. The bond that I was here when we refinanced it to lower the rate, I think originally it was much higher, but we brought it down to like two point something percent, which was great for the city. But now we're paying off one of those bonds, which is why that debt millage was going to go up. However, the city contribute about four hundred thousand dollars to lessen that amount on the taxpayers. And I wanted to provide this slide about homestead assumptions and things like that because a lot of people don't know where to go, how to get information about their assessed values or things like that. VCPA, which is a Broward County Property Appraiser, is the best place to start when it comes to the value of your property. And they have their emails here, their website, and the filing deadline for those assumptions is September seventeen. They were actually here in City Hall today. They usually come. Marty's really good about sending his people to all municipalities. And I also want to piggyback on something that Barbara said. What works for other municipalities might not necessarily work for the City of Dania Beach. And yes, we're getting more revenues on assessed values. Yes, our tax base is going up, but the money is not necessarily going to waste. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of capital investment, and inflation does hit Dania Beach. We're not exempt from inflation. Everybody's feeling it, everyone, users and also governments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Guzman. This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for or against item three point four?
Well, I'd want us to just, to just go with the motion and pass the damn thing. But like I say, last parrot, give it your all. Could I have staff put up that, um, diet, I'm sorry, um, the diagram about only thirty cents comes to Dania Beach? Thank you. Brenda Chalifor, right now living in Dania Beach. Not my first choice anymore. I'm, I'm, I hate to use the word I'm confused because I don't want to be condescended towards by people who think I don't get it. I'm trying to raise a question. I pay an amount.
Michelle, if you could a little bit with the microphone.
I pay an amount of tax to Broward County. I pay an amount of tax to Dania Beach. I pay, well, the assessments, call it what you will. I pay an amount for school board. I'm very confused about only thirty cents comes here. That's silly. You get the hundred and twenty bucks for the swamp, I mean, the stormwater master plan? Do you get the amount I pay for my ta, my trash pickup, which by the way, I'm going to get a hell of a lot more cans? Why not? Add to, add to the bulk of it. I don't, I don't quite understand this graph.
It is thirty cents on the dollar. That's, if you're looking at each dollar, that's how much, that is my understanding that you just get that Dania Beach only receives thirty cents of every dollar.
I, I think it's a little, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's reality in any event. Roll back the millage rate. It doesn't really come to too much for us. It comes to, as Ray calls it, chum change. But it shows you going in the right direction. Like I say, you might as well just call the motion and call the question and vote it in, you're going to anyway. You're not hearing anything. I, I just, I feel like I'm in an alternate universe right now. I see five people, at least two right now, that have something else to do than to look at me and to hear me and to help me, help me. I need help. Any one of you ever came to my door and asked for something, I would say absolutely yes, I'm there for you. I need help. I don't have any more money in my budget for your spending. Roll it back. Roll back the millage rate, roll back the assessments. Roll back the number of staff if we have to. Sure, tough choices are going to have to be made because you've gotten us in a situation we're in. We're bloated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chalifor. All right, Mr. McCall, please come back up and state your name and address for the record.
Cody McCall, thirty-three Southeast twelve three. First, I want to say what a beautiful job that you did on this presentation. You know, there are, you know, a lot of similar cities that, you know, have only a certain percentage, thirty percent, sometimes less, that actually go to the city, and then the other goes to the county and the schools. So thank you for that presentation. I'm also going to say that I've been warned by several members of the community about there's a lot of people that are afraid to speak out, and some of them face, you know, different kinds of retribution. But isn't that all the more reason to speak plainly? The city attorney couldn't have said it better. I'm pleased to be surrounded by educated people up here, but I realize that, you know, not everybody has our level of financial acumen. But in simpler terms, I think that you said we're six point eight seven percent, a little less, above the millage rollback rate? So in plain terms, that means that's the amount that your taxes are going to increase. That's the plainest way to put it. So next year, or as early as next year, the voters may be proposed with the choice to roll back property taxes altogether. Are you going to give them a reason to say no? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Do I have anyone else? I have two more people. Please, sir, come up and state your name and address for the record. I don't believe we've heard from you before.
Good evening. This is my first time here at the common council meeting, so I'm a little off, or I may say something wrong or do something wrong. I apologize, but thank you for having me here, allowing me to speak. It's kind of like the shell game.
Sir, I need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Kurtzgraber. I live in Dania Beach.
Thank you. We will need a form so that the city clerk has.
Form has been filed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like we're just doing a shell game, okay? We need to roll back the millage, we, also as the taxpayers, we need relief. And I don't know why that relief is not coming. Something can be done. I looked at some of the items that are coming up for discussion, and I will be speaking on those this evening, where I think that monies could have been saved or reallocated or done something special with. You know, if we, you have like art districts and art projects and grants and this, that, and the other thing, you know, those are all nice things, but we're beyond that point. We, we need immediate help. If you want to put up a big mural, a statue, some, some kind of artwork or whatever, maybe that should be a private project, maybe that should be privately funded rather than leaning on the City of Dania Beach.
All of our public art is privately funded.
Thank you.
It comes from developer dollars.
We appreciate that, thank you. I don't intend to misspeak, I'm just asking for clarification.
No, I'm just letting you know.
One of the things, though, and, and since this is my first time up here, I don't have the background that you guys might have, y'all may have with regards to the agendas and things like that. But my question is, if someone could elaborate on this for me, please, or educate me and possibly some of the people in the gallery here. It says here, providing for a public hearing when where objections may be heard and questions concerning the same will be answered. Providing for conflicts, I don't know what that means. Further providing for an effective date. Can someone possibly explain that? I mean, I just don't know what that is.
I'll ask our city attorney to elaborate on that terminology for you.
I don't want to waste your time, so I'll do it at the end. So if you have any other questions, we'll get to them, okay?
Well, maybe there are other people in the gallery that don't understand that either.
It's part of the form of a resolution, and it basically means that if there's anything in conflict within the resolution or prior resolutions, this one will supersede.
Okay. All right, well, that was an easy answer. Okay, thank you so much, I do appreciate it. And I, I appreciate the opportunity to stop here and address, address our council. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Do I have anyone else? I have two more, Ms. Lair and Mr. DeRosa. Ms. Lair, come on up. Ms. Layer, come on up.
I won't name names, but some of you ran on, "We have to develop. We have to grow Dania Beach, develop it so we can decrease our taxes." But guess what? That didn't happen. So what happened? You know, I would like to know. I don't like any of the building that's going on. I think it's horrendous. It's ugly. It causes more congestion, puts more stress on the citizens of Dania Beach, the people of Dania Beach. And everyone's upset about it. So we have to put up with all this building everywhere, and we don't get a break. Not in traffic, not in stormwater, not in flooding, nothing. So it's time to change this around. I mean, I'm really upset. I know, I keep, I, I feel bad I have to keep coming up here, but I, I've talked to a few people, they were coming in the door, and they're just as upset as I am. It's, you're making people sick over it, physically ill. Blood pressure goes up, everything. I know mine's high. Thank you. So lower the taxes. You have all the buildings, lower the taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Layer. I appreciate it. Mr. DeRosa?
As, as you can see, there's a lot of frustration amongst the residents in the community. What I, what I handed to Ms. Garcia that I wanted you all to see are, are, about eight weeks ago, I, I put a public records service request to have the Linear Park pressure cleaned. Anyone who goes out there- Bills Park? Anyone who goes out there, it goes from about 3rd Street to 11th Terrace. And that's the result of the pressure cleaning. If I did that on your property, or I, I think you would fire me and tell me never to come back. I, um, two, two additional times I followed up with the city. I said, "It looks like it wasn't completed adequately." And, you know, I did hear our wonderful CFO, very, very talented, say, "Hey, we've increased services, et cetera, et cetera. We can't even pressure clean." And then when I follow up, I'm blown off. I don't get a phone call. That's the way it still looks. Additionally, I handed out a document, and to the best of my knowledge, it says we're paying for massages for city staff, foot massages. And I don't know if that's appropriate in terms of, we're going through tough financial times, is that sending the right message to our senior citizens or our residents? Is that where we should be putting our money? I'd rather put that money into our children's programs for our residents. I'd rather put it into infrastructure, stormwater master plan, and if I could get some clarification for the residents, I really think that's something that should be eliminated. We should not be funding foot massages and chair massages for any city staff. It's just inappropriate. It's improper. It's an improper use, a wasteful use of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Do I have anyone else from the public that wishes to speak for or against item 3.4? All right, then I will close the public comment. At this time, I, I would, though, like to address the rollback rate because I did ask this in my agenda review. We have had the same millage, 5.9998, for it since 2012. Is that correct? That's correct. And so, and, and so I just wanted the public to understand that even though we have increased, you know, our development, that we have unchanged, our, our millage rate remains unchanged, and the issue with rolling it back to 5.6.
Thank you, Mayor. The issue with rolling it back to 5.688 is will be a loss of about $4.7 million revenues for the city of Dania Beach. That money will never be recovered. And the problem with that is, is that yet right now it might be maybe $8, $14 relief for some residents. To make up that value, you're gonna have to increase your military even more in the future to make up for those values. So those are the consequences, as it stands today, of the military.
I just wanted that to be clear, that if we did do it today, then the consequences would be greater later down the line.
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification, Director Guzman. And so, at this time, do I have a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass item 3.4.
I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a second? Commissioner Llewellyn, second. I have a motion in the second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye. The opposed, say nay. All right, item 3.4 passes unanimously. We will move on to item 3.5. Eve, if you would please read item 3.5.
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the city commission as required by the city charter and section 200.065 approving a tentative annual budget for the city for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, providing for a public hearing where objections will be heard and questions concerning the budget will be answered, provided for conflicts and an effective date. This is a finance item.
Thank you, Eve. So this is our final item for tonight, our final budget hearing, and this is our budget for FY 2026, or FY 2026 budget is $156,97109, and that is our budget across all funds. That means your water, your sewer, your stormwater, your internal service funds, all funds throughout the city, including the general fund. This reduction is, excuse me, this budget includes a reduction of about 10.51 in operating expenditures in comparison to last fiscal year. This has been the, I would say this has been the partnership amongst all the city directors, and a big shout out to all of them, all of my peers in the city, from community development, HR, parks, all divisions throughout the city came together to be able to tighten the balance, to be able to find reductions within their budget for this fiscal year. So there is a reduction of about 10, on operating expenses of about 10.51%.
Thank you, Director Guzman. This is a public hearing. Do I have anyone who wishes to speak for or against this item?
I don't want to waste more of my time. What the heck? And I'm sorry to hold people up. This happened to you last week, and I'm so sorry. It's inappropriate. Brenda Shalifor, Dania Beach. There's one way to make up a deficit. Stop spending! In my house, if we don't have the money for it, we don't get it. And guess what? Sometimes we don't have the money for what we need, not what we want. This budget is freaking bloated, and I'm sorry. I try to be as judicious as I can, but if I get nothing else across to you people tonight, you'll have to answer to someone else down the road. But this is just blatant disregard for the taxpayers' needs. And guess what? You may not have a millage to increase or decrease because the populace is gonna vote for that, no taxes on homesteaded property. You know why? Because when they come and ask for relief, they don't get it. If someone gave me relief, I might think twice about it. And we're not gonna be bamboozled that we won't have fire, we won't have police, baloney. We're not buying it. We're just not buying the bill of goods anymore. Do you hear me? It's not happening. You've taxed the heck out of people to the, to the, the point of no return. The path you're headed down is outrageous. You've mortgaged our futures. I think it was fabulous to get the Frost House, until I found out you put a mortgage on it. I'm done paying mortgages. And pretty soon, I'm gonna be done paying taxes. And now I know a sneaky way to get rid of more rubbish. I mean, I just don't, it's boggling my mind. I know you guys are smarter than this. I know you guys are smarter than putting up zero lotline buildings. Come on! At least you were smarter during campaign time when you made an awful lot of promises. Thank you. For nothing.
Thank you, Michelle. Ms. Layer, then Mr. DeRosa, and... Come on, Ray. Mr. DeRosa.
I'll need all of these exhibits he's provided at the end, so I can keep it for the record, please.
Thank you, city clerk.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast 5th Street. Again, I want to reference Ms. Garcia's wonderful April 26 memo about thinking outside of the ga- oh, box, have a game plan, cook costs, and generate revenues. If you gave me an opportunity as an investor to infiltrate a single-family residential community and flip those homes into motels, I certainly would have an expectation that I should be offsetting the burden to the single-family residential homeowners. And what I mean by that is, the short-term rentals, the vacation rentals have completely transformed how we view a single-family residential community. We don't, we no longer have that quiet aspect to it due to this infiltration. And you truly can't appreciate it unless you live directly adjacent next door. Not two houses down, not four houses down, not, hey, it's across the street, directly adjacent. Dania, we have small lotlines, 40 to 60 feet. So, other cities have been negatively impacted by this. We've heard you all talk about it. Oh, we can't do anything about it. We can't do anything about it to offset the burden. We have to deal with Tallahassee. That's really not true. You can see Cocoa Beach took, took action this, this year. To their credit, it has, have increased their short-term vacation rental fee and application fee by 400% and their inspection fees. I don't know what the current number is that we have. I don't know if it's 250, or that's what we think we have, but we're presently at $530. And I don't know if that's an annual plus 530 for the application. So if you do simple math, you're, you're leaving about a half million to $750,000 on the table to offset the tax burden on our residents and to put into programs that could hopefully enhance and improve the community. And I would greatly appreciate, you know, as our elected officials and our, our administration, if you would, please consider strongly putting some motions forward to create a revenue stream off the short terminals. It's, it's, it's low-hanging fruit. Cocoa Beach already started it. You don't have to bear the accountability, oh, you're the first one. So, I'd like to leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Ms. Layer?
Ray Layer, the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. I'm sorry, I can't stay quiet. I know one way to make up some of that $4.7 million you're gonna lose in taxes. How about some pay cuts for the staff? Commissioners, I figure up you're, you're, you're right getting in 60 grand a year with your phone covered, $10,000 for a year for spending to go to whatever you do. You know, take some pay cuts. Try that on. We take pay cuts. And I want to thank Cody for the work he did in bringing it to our attention, the citizens' attention. And I really don't appreciate everyone sitting up here saying, "It's misinformation, it's lies. We know more than anybody." You know? I think that's horrible. And y'all like to pass the buck. Well, it wasn't us. I remember 40 years ago, the commissioners, Bob Anton, Mac McLeary, John Bertino, they worked for the citizens of Dania Beach. They put their heart and souls into Dania Beach. So did Bob Anton, fighting the airport for us. I expect you to do the same. Fight for us. Do what's right for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layer.
Oh, and I agree with Brenda. We have no qualms about paying police and fire. No qualms at all, because they protect us, and they do a hell of a good job doing it.
They do. Thank you, Ms. Layer. Mr. McCall?
Cody McCall, 33 Southeast 12th Street. I want to start off by setting the record straight. It's, this is an aging city, and to be fair, a lot of the challenges that we have inherited are not the fault of this administration. It's not your fault that it's 120 years old. It's not your fault that the infrastructure is aging. For that, I don't blame you. However, you do have an opportunity to make it right. I also want to challenge the propaganda that if you don't lower the millage, or if you lower the millage this year, you'll pay for it next year. There are cities out there in this area that have consistently lowered the millage over 30% in the last 20 years, and that's a fact. It can be done. So yes, this budget, as I mentioned earlier, it's up from 14 million in 2020 to over 40 million in just property tax revenue, as I said earlier. And then, staff went up to 211, up from 155, a 36% increase. I didn't go through line by line, as we talked about the massages and some of the other things, because I don't like to, you know, embarrass specific people. However, I'm really good at cutting expenses. In fact, one of the things that I'm most proud of is really collaborating with those and setting the standards on how local government should operate, and this doesn't meet that standard. This, that's... Operating efficiently should not be a partisan issue. It's simply wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. And we have, come on back up, sir.
Common Council, Robert Kirchgraber, Dania Beach, Florida. Resident, been here since 2013. I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some not so good. I'm wondering if we, if, if you all have considered getting a Department of Government Efficiency where we can start doing some audits with regards to how our money's spent, with regards to adding additional employees, adding additional contractors, how efficiently these employees and contractors are in fact supposedly doing the work that we're paid for. Anybody in this room, I'm sure, has driven around and seen guys standing on shovels, you know, code enforcement not being addressed, different things that certainly can, we can tighten up. And I, I firmly believe that. I think that, you know, in my budget, in my home, you know, there are times I live hand to mouth. I'm not proud of it, okay? But when that happens, guess what, folks? It's beans and rice. I can't knock on the neighbor's door and say, "Hey, I need 3% more. Can you help me out? Pay 3% on my mortgage, pay this, pay that?" Doesn't work that way. We have to make it on our own. And when you were all elected here, you're here and you work for us, the citizens and residents of Dania Beach. And working for us at times can be extremely rewarding, and I'm sure it can be very difficult. And we're asking you to make that difficult decision and stop the shell game. And we're asking you to make that difficult decision and stop the shell game. It's all, it's a talking point. Oh, we haven't raised the millage rate for all these years. You don't have to. Because the, uh, tax authority that puts the assessments on our home has increased it so much and has given you a bloated revenue stream. And as soon as that revenue stream comes in, it's gone. And the reason why we need DOGE is also to figure out where are we with our infrastructure? Because at some point in time, a city that's a hundred and twenty-five years old, things are gonna break. Pipes are gonna break, roads, bridges, everything. Where's that money gonna come through? Are we gonna, are we gonna rely upon, uh, grants from either the federal government? Maybe a, a small community in Michigan taking their money and using it down here? I don't know, maybe. But it's not all about grants. We have to be fiscally responsible. And, and we, and that will make us shine. And that will bring people into Dania Beach. That will bring businesses into Dania Beach. When we're fiscally responsible and people can walk around with their heads high saying, "We have a fantastic government." They watch out for their citizens. And they are also business-friendly, where they encourage small businesses and don't put restrictions on small businesses with outrageous, uh, insurance requirements to do business in Dania Beach. And with this, I close and I thank you so much for your time. Please reconsider this budget.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments from the public for item three point five? Come on up, come on up and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Lisette Roberto, two thirty-seven Northwest Seventh Avenue. And I just wanted to come up here to serve as representation that your choices have not only affected, um, senior citizens, but also affecting the ability for new homeowners, such as myself and my partner, to continue with our dream because this budget is going to double our property taxes. And while we've hard, we've worked really hard to be able to achieve that, it's gonna be extremely difficult for us in the future. So I'd just like to remind you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I, I'm not uncertainly sure how your taxes are gonna, can you speak to that, uh, Jamie, at all? I don't know. You're talking about your...
Yeah, if you, if you can please, um, see me afterwards. I'm not really sure I'm understanding how your taxes are gonna double from this budget. Yeah, we can certainly get together because the tax miller trade, it is not going to... Our voter-approved debt? Yeah. That, this point zero nine, it hasn't increased. Yeah, actually, it's stayed the same. We'll have to take a look at your situation because our miller trade stays exactly the same, nothing double. Absolutely. I'll take a look at your chart. It's like, definitely go through that. Okay.
All right. I just wanted you, you guys will work that, uh, out together. I, I...
Right. I'll, I'll get with them independently because, like, taxes are not supposed to double anyway.
Okay. That's, uh, uh, that was my understanding. Do I have any other comments from the public? And I will close public comments and I will call on, um, let me get a motion in a second first, then we'll put it to discussion. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan. Discussion from the Commission.
Yeah, I wanna say something. First, I, you know, I'm, I feel for the people that are struggling, that, uh, can't take the, uh, the increase of the two hundred and seventy-five dollars a year on certain things and whatever our little increases were. And I know a little, I say little, it may be big for you and, and I don't mean to offend you in any way. You know, on the other side of the coin that's out there is that, you know, we have thirty-five thousand residents in a city and, out of those thirty-five thousand residents, I hear a lot of people that are very, very happy with what we have going on. They're very happy of the public safety. They're very happy with the, uh, the growth and the, and the beautification. And, uh, our streets are cleaner and just on and on and on about certain things. There is gonna be a, a limited amount of people that don't like it because it does affect your, your income. Uh, it does affect your, your way of life if you, if you can't afford it. You know, there is in life, when we vote, it's a majority. And, you know, we hear it from both sides and, you know, and when you're up here on this end and you're listening to the, uh, the people call you and ask for something to be done in their street, they wanna have their street paved or, uh, they wanna have their, um, uh, sidewalk fixed by the city or they wanna just, just, I mean, just the, the, some of the stuff that we get text and emailed. Everybody wants something and we try to counter the, the speed bumps or, or solar lighting. That stuff comes at a cost. And that cost is, but if, if, if they get it and it gets passed, you'll have the same amount of people coming here and vote, ask us to vote for solar lighting. And if it does, then it goes into the budget. I mean, I'm just using little things as, as examples. And for us to have those things come up and the other part of the city, uh, residents that are asking for these things, it costs money. And, you know, do I, I mean, I, do I wanna spend more money? No, I don't. You know, I mean, but if I want these amenities in our city, and you know, when you start talking about, uh, our city looking better and this and that. You know, Dania Point came here and it's one of the largest employer, employment that we have in the city of Dania Beach. And a lot of people have jobs over there. And if you've been over there, I mean, we're, it's thriving every weekend and there's a lot of people going over there. Unfortunately, not everybody can enjoy these things. And that's where, uh, I do feel for you. But, you know, there's also the, the other half of the people out there that are, the other majority of the people out there that really like what's going on in this city. I don't like to have it thrown in my face as an elected official that I made promises. The only thing, I, and, and, and to, uh, one of the, uh, people speaking, yeah, I did, I did ask for, uh, when I was elected in twenty fourteen, uh, I promoted, um, you know, building. I promoted it because it was gonna bring a tax base to us. That tax base to us came in. And with all that tax money that has come in, that we're getting on our property taxes, as they explained to you earlier tonight, that our biggest tax increase comes from commercial property. Those are the monies that, uh, help keep everything down as I look at it. And when we get explained to it, that it keeps our things down. If we didn't have that money coming in and the, and, and that growth wasn't there, the infrastructure in our city is, as you said, is falling apart. These things don't get fixed. We just put millions of dollars into the drainage system in southeast Dania. You know, some of it through us, some of it through grants. We have fifty million, uh, dollars going to parks over at CW Thomas, thirty, twenty, twenty-five million dollars because the people wanted a new park. They, you, but the people want, they want, they want. But then when you do, when you give it to them and you have to pay for it, they don't wanna have a tax increase. I don't understand where there's, the compromise is there. We try hard, when we do these budgets, we try very, very hard to understand everybody's position. But the, but the majority of the people out there, it's, it can't make everybody happy. You just can't do it. And, you know, and I, as an elected official up here, I use my best judgment, what's best, as much as I can, the best I can for everybody out there and try to have a compromise. It's very difficult being up here because I, I look at the sadness in your face when you want, don't want the budget to be rate, or the, the increase in the, in the increase. But it just, you know, you have to, it changes there. Like the inflationary rates there. I mean, you used to be able to build a house for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot. Now it's four hundred dollars a foot. I mean, what are you, what are you supposed to do? You know, tell the people they can't have a home? And I think as, and your thing, did you just purchase your house? Yeah, just per, I mean, just recently? Okay. So last year, would, the reason your property taxes went up because when you bought the house, you paid for, the taxes were there, I'd, I'd say a thousand dollars on your house, but because the new property appraiser came in and told you your house is worth twice what it is, your, your taxes doubled. It had nothing to do with the city of Dania Beach. It had to do with your property values. The same as, I bought a lot, a waterfront lot I bought a couple of years ago. It went from a two hundred dollars a year to, to nine thousand for, because they, they readjusted the price. So I'm getting rid of the lot. I don't wanna pay nine thousand for an empty lot. So, you know, it's just, everybody out there has a complaint and I, I'm sorry that you're upset. But this budget that the, the city staff has worked on diligently and the things that we give back to the community for all the hard work that they're putting into it. And, you know, I take offense to it that there's people that don't understand our position. And I really do because we really, really work hard. As far as getting paid for this job, I don't need the money. I don't care if I get paid or not. So don't think that I need the fifty thousand dollars a year you give me because I surely don't. Because I worked my ass off all my life to get where I'm at. So, you know, it is a position where if they wanna take my money away, take it. I don't need it. I don't think anybody up here needs it. So we're not up here for that. That was elect, that was brought up years ago by where it started at and gets voted on, voted on. I don't ever wanna see a tax, I mean, a, a payroll increase for us. I don't. And I don't care if I get it. But I mean, those little things, you know, come at you and it just gets old hearing it because I, I'll be honest with you. I'm here to do the best I can for every single resident. And if there's a few individuals out there, I can't please, I'm very sorry about that, but I am giving you my best. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Salvino. Do I have any other comments from the Commission, uh, Commissioner Luella?
Yes, I wanna make a comment about the, um, staffing, um, that was brought up earlier. The, the, there seems to be a, a misconception that all of the staffing just happened more recently and it was only needed just recently, or that we just decided suddenly that we're just going to increase the, the amount of staff in the city. For a very long time, the population of this city was growing, long before twenty twenty. It grew exponentially every year for a number of years. And the staffing did not. I recall at, I wanna say it was two thousand and nineteen, we also did a, um, an assessment of staffing that is done by HR and found that we were underpaying people. Which was part of the reason why we were having difficulty retaining people. So, one, we had, we did not have enough people because things were, were increasing. Services were needed. Additional people were needed to handle the, the, the programs and then just the basic everyday things that were being done. I think at one point, we had two people handling facilities, all of the facilities, correct? So cleaning everything, doing everything in all of the facilities, two, out of this entire city. And we have, I don't even know how many buildings, but there's a lot of them. And I think that also, didn't that include part, uh, part of the cemetery? No, that was separate. But two people. That, that's crazy. I remember sitting here before I was elected, listening to the Commission. Every single time something came up that needed to be done, they called on the same person, Mark LeFerrier. Every single time. He's one person, but every time something was needed, he was the one that they tasked to do it because he did it. And he said, yes. You can't do that. And you can't do that forever. So when we have our, our city manager comes in and evaluates everything and assesses everything and starts looking at staffing and what, what needs to be done, those needs needed to be addressed. And are we increasing staff? We're absolutely increasing public safety. That is our number one priority. It always has been. Um, and that is something that needs to be done. Public safety is expensive. They are included under, um, Mr. McCall's, um, assessment under contractors, but apparently are also included under full-time employees. So that being the case, I mean, you, do, do, do you want us to have, uh, safe streets and safe homes? Um, I know, I know where Ms., um, Shalifor lives and her neighborhood has no crime. Literally, no crime.
Ms., Ms. Shalifor, we cannot have that. Ms. Shalifor, that is my last. I, I, I do not want to remain... Ms. Shalifor, you have, you're gonna have to go. If, if you could, if you shout out one more time, I'm gonna have, and I don't wanna do that. You know I don't wanna do that, but I will because we must have decorum in these chambers.
So we are, I'm just gonna continue. She can call me a liar all she wants. It's fine. Um, but the bottom line is, is that we have very safe neighborhoods. Our crime rates are down. If you call for an ambulance, it comes and it comes quickly. And you have people that care, care, they care about their jobs. They want to be here. They want to be employed here. And they, it's an excellent culture for the employees, which is the reason why we have such qualified people like the individuals who have gotten up and spoken and have presented to you all tonight, who ha, who are all very qualified. CPAs have been doing this type of work for many, many years. Um, and I, I know our director, our, our finance director has been here thirteen years, I think. He's been with the city for thirteen years.
Hold on, save it.
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah.
I've been with the city, working in the finance department. I would say with the best finance professionals, including the president of the FDFOA for thirteen years.
Right. And they have received awards every single year for their budgets. If there was something wrong with the budget, somebody would have noticed by now and said something. There have been, there's been awards every year. There have been, we've had mo, more than one audit company that's been auditing the, the budgets every year. Um, this is...
I just wanna mention we're what's called triple crown winners, which includes our popular financial report, our certificate of excellence in financial reporting, also our budget report.
Right. And GF, GF, or is it?
From the DFI.
Right. But we've also won that award every year.
For the last thirty-five years on our financial reporting, for the last three years on our budget and for the last, um, about to be second year on the popular financial report. Thank you.
And, and also we do have separate private audits that are done. So, you know, there are things that happened years ago that simply weren't addressed. There were issues with infrastructure. There were issues with staffing. There were issues with lots of things going on in the city and nothing, unfortunately, was done with it. And now, here we are, trying to make up for that. And we have, we are going above and beyond, having communications with the city. We do these core meetings that, we just had one last week. And information is provided and inevitably at every single one of these meetings, the things that people tell us that they want. They want us to fix the flooding. They want us to make sure they have safe streets and safe places to go. They wanna make sure that they, that they can, that, um, you know, we're, that we're paving streets, that we're doing things like that. These are all things that are budgeted for. And you can't pay for all of these things all at once. Some of them have to be done over time in different phases. And that's what part of this is for. We've also received revenue from very large sources that, that, such as FPL. We received a, a whole bunch of revenue from FPL, which does pay for some of these items as well. But we also have restrictions on what we can use the different funds for. So if we get funding that comes in, let's say, for example, a developer comes in and they have to pay impact fees. Some of those go to public art. We talked about that earlier. We just raised the impact fee for public art so that this way they're paying more. We have some that are impact fees that go to parks. We have a brand-new park that's slated to go in over by where Olson is. And that's being paid a hundred percent by impact fees. Nothing coming from taxpayer dollars. So I, I, I think there has been some, um, I agree there has been misinformation that is being put out there without knowing the full history of everything that has gone on with the ci, the city in the past and actually where all the money is coming from and where it is going to. And I think if you look at the budget a little more closely, you'd actually see that. And I do appreciate our staff trying to do what they can to try to e, educate everybody and provide the information. We all get to sit down with the, with these, these very bright individuals who work very hard for the city and go through things line by line. And we can make recommendations and we can make changes. And, you know, I have to tell you, this, this year actually was probably the easiest year because everything was spelled out so thoroughly and in so much detail that it just made sense. So I understand that you have people that are upsetting you and that are telling you certain things, but I just have to say there's a lot more to the story than what you're being told. And making assumptions based upon somebody putting a couple of videos out there is not the way to go with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Luella. Um, do we have any further discussion from the Commission? I, I will just say that I am sensitive to the comments from the residents. I don't want you to feel like your concerns go on deaf ears or fall on deaf ears. We do have the privilege of sitting down with our city manager, our city attorney, our finance director and going through and expressing your concerns because we are elected to be your voice. And so I get to comb through the information and I write, I have all my notes from all my meetings and I, and I write down my notes in very great detail because I am, we are representing you. So if you don't understand it, I don't understand it. And so I go through, uh, with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that I can... And so, I go through with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that I can explain it in a way that makes sense to you. So, if you don't still understand it, please, that's why we are your elected officials, but I get to a point where I am satisfied with the expertise of our chief financial officer, and who has really, and I do ask the questions very deep and make sure that it makes sense. And so, if you're still unclear, if you still don't see, because we do have to pay for our police, we do have to pay for our fire, we, and I didn't even want the, when I saw the stormwater, I was like, does it have to be that much? The hundred and twenty, can't we roll that back? Can we make that a little less? And then, it was explained to me, and we do, stormwater, we talk about the flooding and the flooding mitigation all the time, and so, we have to invest a little bit more into that stormwater, because our pipes are, you know, we are a hundred and twenty-one years old, and the stormwater master plan is real. We got feedback from the community in order to address the stormwater master plan. So, we understand that flooding is a number-one concern for you all, we understand that fire and safety is, and so, if you still don't feel comfortable with that, please, let us have a meeting, let's talk about it. We can agree to disagree, but respectfully, because we are here to represent you, and I want you to have the benefit of understanding at a deeper level, the same way I did. So, if you're open to doing that, please contact me, contact us, so that you can have the same level of understanding that we do. We're doing the best that we can, and we want to represent you the best way that we possibly can. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Item 3.5 passes unanimously. At this time, I am going to go out of order, because there are some very well-behaved children who have sat through this budget meeting. And I don't know how I'm doing it, so I don't know how you're doing it. And so, my dear, my very dear friend, it is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, it is September. Thank you, guys, for being so well behaved through all of that, but we are getting ready to move on to that proclamation, and then, and then we will, we will resume back to order. So, I, um, let's see, I gotta put my glasses on. So, if I could have Sylvia Vani and her team Sammy and our Childhood Cancer Awareness team, please to come up. I'm going to read this proclamation. I thank you for your patience. It is so beautiful to see you, I haven't got my hug yet, but I will get it, I promise. I want to read this proclamation, and then I would like for Sylvia Vani, the founder of Mystic Forest Foundation, to say a few words. Whereas, children are our most precious resource, and their well-being is vital to a bright future for the city of Daniel Beach. And whereas, cancer is a life-altering diagnosis for anyone, and its impact, it felt more profoundly when it touches a child and their family. And whereas, childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and one in two-hundred-and-sixty children in the United States will be diagnosed by their twentieth birthday. Whereas, eighty percent of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease, and whereas, in thirty years, only seven new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer, while two-hundred drugs have been approved for adults. And whereas, approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses and considerable, and- Something, okay. And considerable to severe, and whereas, childhood cancer regularly and indiscriminately affecting families regardless of ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and geographic location, and the causes of most childhood cancers remain unknown and cannot currently be prevented. And whereas, scientists and medical professionals are continually advancing the diagnosis and treatment of cancer, offering children a better chance to live a full life. Now, therefore, on the behalf of City of Daniel Beach, I Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Daniel Beach, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Daniel Beach, and do encourage all citizens to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause so that, so deeply impacts families in every community across our country. Please give a round of applause to our representative today.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my beautiful city manager, all of you. Thank you so much for honoring our children in this way every year. We are so very thankful to you. For the residents that don't know, this is my baby, and he passed away from cancer. He was four-and-a-half years old when he was diagnosed with stage-four neuroblastoma cancer, and in three-and-a-half years, he underwent fifty-five cycles of chemotherapy, fifty rounds of radiation, he had over twelve surgeries, he had two-hundred blood and platelet transfusions, and that's the norm for our children battling these very aggressive cancers. Most people don't know that childhood cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in our country. You always hear that there is such a high rate of cures for our children, but that is for the most common type of childhood cancer, which is leukemia, but for some of the other aggressive cancers, survival rates are very dismal. And for some of our childhood cancers, such as DIPG, which is an operable brain tumor, it is terminal upon diagnosis. And the only way that we will ever find cures for our children is to raise awareness. And if you have a child, you know that there is nothing more important in life than our children. Jake is Christina's son, and he finished his cancer treatment two years ago, so if you look on the back of the postcard, he's a little boy wearing the Batman shirt. Childhood cancer affects the entire family, not just the child battling cancer. This is my daughter Samantha.
Hey, Sammy.
Christina. Danica. Kathy, sorry. Christina, Kathy. And Christina's children, I'll just let Christina say a word also.
Thank you, guys, so much for having us here today and raising awareness for childhood cancer. As a mom who has a son who battled cancer, I can't tell you how much community means and how much awareness means. They've gone through a very long-
Yes, they've been, they've been amazing.
They think this is a playground at this point, I'm sorry, but-
It's okay.
I am just grateful that you guys are here and that you guys are supporting childhood cancer, because it is very important. Some children don't survive. Jake is one of the lucky ones, and although he's twenty-two months, twenty months, no evidence of disease, he won't be considered cancer-free until five years. And even though he's not in active treatment right now, he still goes to clinic visits regularly, he still gets poked and prodded, he still has to undergo all of the things, and he's ten years old, so for the rest of his life, he'll see an oncologist, a cardiologist, doctors for his liver and his kidneys. So, it's important, it's important to raise awareness. They're our future, so thank you.
Thank you, and if we could just take a group picture, we want to present this proclamation to you. Thank you for your work. We love you. We're going down. Yeah, yeah, I think we need it, I think we need it. Yeah, everyone, at this time, we've finished the budget, we're gonna resume back with the, we're gonna take a five-minute break. We just all need a five-minute break, and we will resume back at, let's just do nine o'clock. Plus two.
We just had a lovely resident come and tell me that she's so grateful for the flowers that we installed. I love her, I love her. She's like the sweetest. Look at, look at. Oh, my God, they're the cutest, they're the cutest. Hugs, hugs, hugs.
Here it is.
Okay, everybody, we're getting ready to get back to the business at hand. If we can have our, rest of our commission and administration, so we can begin again, thank you. Alright, well, we're gonna begin. We're gonna go ahead and begin, uh, so we, I think we just need the commission for this part of it. And I call this meeting back to order at nine oh six. Next, we have presentations and special event approvals. We have item four point one for request for proclamation approvals. Do I, uh, we have a request for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Mayor Davis. We have Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Mayor Davis. Suicide Prevention Month, September twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Commissioner Llewellyn. And Robert Wyland Day, September thirtieth, sponsored by Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have consensus for these proclamation approvals?
Yes.
Okay, so we have unanimous approval for item three point one. Next, we have item three point two, special event applications. Parks and Recreation, the Rita Crockett Beach Sports Academy Grand Opening on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and the Sea Turtle Unveil, Sea Butte Turtle unveiling on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have consensus for these special event applications? Alright, I have unanimous approval for item three point two. Next, we have item three point three, presentation by... Am I miss, I'm missing that? Four? Well, that's what I know. We have presentation by Public Services Regarding Resident-Only Cemetery Proposal by Sean Shutton.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Attorney. Uh, this is a topic that we discussed previously at the June twenty-fourth Commission Meeting, regarding changing the cemetery rules to residents only purchasing, um, the lots and having the services for them. Uh, before I get into the modifications that we went into, let me just give a background of how we got to this point. Alright, so Dania Beach has two cemeteries, uh, Dania Memorial Park and West Lawn Cemetery. Both are located just north of Sheridan and west of US One. Um, currently, non-residents and residents are permitted to be in the cemeteries. Uh, what we've experienced in the recent, uh, within the last year or two years is that the non-residents are purchasing those plots at a very high rate. And we're concerned that the plots available will, uh, run out within four years. So we brought this to the Commission's attention, uh, on June twenty-fourth, as I mentioned. And, and we proposed, um, that we would change it to resident-only services. Now, we don't know the reasons why we're having a higher rate of non-residents come in, but this is just to recap, the service rates for, of services in Dania Beach compared to contemporary, um, cemeteries are much lower for residents and non-residents. So we believe that's one of the reasons for the root causes. Alright, so just to recap what we did in June twenty-four, uh, we came and we said we'd like to change this to limit to just residents only being able to purchase the plots. And actually, I did prepare some handouts if I'd be able to distribute them. So the handout does have three portions to it. The first is showing what the modifications are, um, for this, this resolution, which is going to be presented on the Consent Agenda, item nine point four, I believe. The one that we presented in the second page is June twenty-fourth, and the back page is more of a visual depiction of what this lineage looks like. It truly helped me, and I hope that helps you out as well when you look at this. The biggest feedback that we did receive is when we restrict the plots to residents only, that family members cannot be interred together. Your brothers, sisters, mothers, sons, um, whatever it might be, only the right, the rights would only be, um, allowed for the resident only and not those family members. So we did review, um, other, other cemetery rules and regulations in South Florida, and we came up with a couple of modifications based upon those rules and regulations. So we, we changed it, the resolution, to not just be residents, but immediate family. And for the purposes of this resolution, immediate family would pertain to father, mother, spouse, domestic partner, children, stepchildren, siblings, half-siblings, and in-laws, as well as their direct descendants. Furthermore, we did provide a clause for non-residency, one exception, and that would be for any former elected, um, official from Dania Beach. And as I mentioned, this item would be on nine point four of the Consent Agenda this evening. Again, this is kind of the analysis of why we determined this. Uh, these are just the last two years of Bear Hills. Um, we're seeing just, actually, just this past year, we've had a record amount of, of non-resident plot sales, a hundred and seventy-three versus just twenty-nine for residents. And that rate, if it does continue, we do think in four years, we'd run out of, uh, plots in those cemeteries. Uh, additionally, there was some discussion about increasing the capacity of the cemetery, and that would include developing a mausoleum. So we did an initial analysis of what that would look like. Of the two, of the two, um, cemeteries that we do have, there's only space for a mausoleum at the Dania Memorial Park. Based upon an analysis that was conducted in twenty twenty oh six, we were able to work with a consultant, and they determined, uh, that the, the cost of that mausoleum construction would be about, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. It would include two hundred forty slots, and that's for caskets, a hundred thirty niches, and that's gonna be for urns. But it would be at the cost of one hundred and twenty surface plots. So we would lose the surface plots but gain the mausoleum plots. What we did realize is that, based upon our, our review of the cemetery purchases, plots are purchased at a rate about seventeen times higher than those in mausoleum spaces. So we do see a higher demand for the plots. And I suppose with that, if there's any feedback regarding the resolution that we're presenting tonight or any discussion on the topic, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you, Sean, for that, uh, wonderful presentation. Do I have any discussion from the Commission on this item? You have a motion? Oh, sorry, sorry. So Sean, do you have any further? Does the Commission have any questions about this presentation? Alright. Excellent job, sir, we appreciate it, and I guess you're excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Proclamations, item five point one, Hispanic Heritage Month, presented by Commissioner Lori Llewellyn. Commissioner Llewellyn.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Um, every year, um, for the last several years, um, I've been doing the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. We've had, um, with our growing population, we have also had a growing population of people of Hispanic descent. Um, and in fact, we, um, have a new elected on the dais who also is our first, um, Hispanic descent, uh, Commissioner. So I wanted to take the opportunity to, um, do a proclamation regarding this again. With that, uh, proclamation, Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas each year from September fifteen, Oc, to October fifteen, the United States of America observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors came to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas the Hispanic Heritage Month theme for twenty twenty-five is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. This month is an opportunity to recognize and learn about the history, journeys, and achievements of the Hispanic and Latin American communities while spotlighting the unique voices and experiences of those who continue to pioneer change and shape the future. And whereas the Hispanic population of the United States is now at sixty-eight million, constituting twenty percent of the total population in twenty twenty-four, and where more than thirty-four point three percent of the population of the City of Dania Beach is Hispanic or Latino. And whereas locally Hispanics and Latinos from diverse cultures, races, and ethnicities contribute to the vitality and uniqueness of Florida and the City of Dania Beach as residents, business owners, investors, staff, leaders, and volunteers. And whereas the City of Dania Beach has fifty-six Hispanic employees, which is twenty-four percent of the city's employee work, workforce. And whereas in November twenty twenty-four, the City of Dania Beach elected its first City Commissioner of Hispanic Heritage, Commissioner Louis Ramoli. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound, significant, and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family and faith and fully embracing the American dream via ambition, work ethic, and a great love for the United States and passion for the communities they serve, now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, our, our Mayor Joyce L. Davis does hereby proclaim September fifteen through October fifteen, twenty twenty-five, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Dania Beach, and encourage our residents to reflect on and celebrate the many contributions Hispanics have made to our city and nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and congratulations, Commissioner Ramoli. Alright, we're going to move on then to item five point three, National Diaper Awareness Week from September fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And I will read that proclamation aloud. Whereas diaper need the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily, weekly supply of diapers is gen, generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas many parents struggle with the diaper need, report missing an average of five days of work each month to insufficient supply of diapers. Whereas without diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the citizens of Dania Beach recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for cities' families and community improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and family have access to the necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Broward County is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including the Greater Fort Lauderdale Diaper Bank, and the Florida Essential Needs Coalition, recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach, uh, Joyce L. Davis, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through twenty-one, twenty twenty-five as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Dania Beach, and encourage our citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers. And we do have someone here from, uh, Broward County, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Diaper Bank. Would you please come up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit?
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone. My name is Alisa, I'm an intern with Fort, Greater Fort Lauderdale Diaper Bank. We have diaper drives every first Thursday at the Tyrone Byron Library, and you can also look at our upcoming diaper drives on fortladdiairediaperbank.org. Thank you.
Thank you, we would like to present you with this proclamation.
I guess we're gonna take a picture.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, sorry.
Okay, next we will have Suicide Prevention Month, September twenty twenty-five, presented by Commissioner Llewellyn.
So I wanted to, I'm sorry?
Make sure you're close.
My, oh, my, okay. Yeah. So I, I requested this proclamation because I've been seeing a little trend lately. I've become aware of a couple of different people who did commit suicide recently, one of whom was a resident in the city. Another was a former resident of the city who moved elsewhere. In, in, in some cases, there were signs, in some cases, there weren't. But it, it, I think it's very important for us all to try to be sensitive to the fact that sometimes we don't know what other people are going through. And I think sometimes just little things, like just being kind to each other, really helps, and just asking somebody what they're feeling and what they're going through. And that will sometimes at least let people know that you're trying to reach out. The, the, the most recent suicide was a, a very big shock to a lot of people. And it was unnecessary. It was not, I mean, they're all unnecessary, but it was very unnecessary. There were, there were things that were happening, and, and I, I, I felt very strongly that it, it could have been prevented, in any event. So with that, I just wanted to do this proclamation because I did happen to find out that it was Suicide Prevention Month this month, and I wanted to make sure to acknowledge that. This is the proclamation from the, from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas the city of Dania Beach is firmly committed to raising awareness about suicide prevention, and whereas suicide is a serious public health issue and a leading cause of death in the United States, tragically impacting families, friends, and entire communities. And whereas suicide is a complex issue with no single cause, and it is most often influenced by a combination of factors, including untreated mental health conditions. And whereas in the United States, one in twenty adults have serious thoughts about suicide each year, with one person dying from suicide every eleven minutes, seventy-nine percent of all people who die of suicide are men. And whereas the stigma surrounding mental health and suicide can prevent individuals from seeking the help they need, and whereas suicide is preventable, preventable through community-wide awareness, education, and support programs that encourage open conversation, reduce stigma, and promote help-seeking. And whereas effective prevention strategies include increasing public understanding of risk factors and warning signs, strengthening access to mental health services, and building compassionate, supportive communities. And whereas resources like the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline offer immediate, free, and confidential support twenty-four seven via call, text, or chat. Now therefore, on behalf of the, of the Dania Beach City Commission, our mayor, Joyce L. Davis, does hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Dania Beach, and encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of the mental health education, and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes caring for our mental health and advocating for resources for those in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. And up next, we have item six, our administrative reports, Madam City Manager.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, residents that are here with us, and residents that are watching on TV. Throughout the last couple of days that have actually turned into weeks, we have had significant rain in, in South Florida. Our city team continues to take unprecedented proactive efforts, seven days a week, to ensure that we are cleaning storm drainage, storm drains throughout the city, and that we have immediately activated a plan via our deputy city manager, the director of public services, and our deputy director of public services. Prior to any calls or emails received, we, we are clear, clearing the storm drains in anticipation of the storms. We also have a necessary barricade ready to be deployed, such as the ones that, that were put out at Southeast Tenth Street to restrict vehicle access. Other areas, such as Thirty-Fourth Terrace, we are pleased to report that the new drainage system is working very well. And I want to explain how, how this works. The, the gravity-based system discharges into the existing outfalls in the Dania-Caroff Canal. Other areas reported, such as Thirty-Seventh Terrace, a project we completed, are draining nicely, as well as Sterling Oaks Estates. Other areas, such as Gulfstream Road, are draining well. It's, it's important to note that during heavy torrential rains, water will accumulate. However, the key is the timing of the water draining, and that has been observed throughout our entire city. All the completed projects, a record number these past six years, and, and I want to put that on, on the record, an unprecedented investment in storm drainage, an unprecedented amount of grants that have been sought out and received. All five of these elected officials either coming to Tallahassee with me and the team, going to Washington, DC. We, we have not, we have not let any stone be unturned in regards to being extremely proactive with storm drainage monies that we have been able to seek out and, and receive. Also, the city's first ever, ever storm drainage master plan. It's, it's very important to note that having a proactive game plan versus being reactionary is what leadership is all about. We are replacing old pipes. This is extremely cost-effective versus waiting for a pipe to burst. As we have discussed, our city is one hundred and twenty-one years old, so we continue to invest in our city, and we're very, very proud about that. We have an additional project that, moving forward by the Greek Restaurant. We have been in constant communication with all our residents, and it's, it's a total team effort. All five of these elected officials reaching out to myself, to, to our deputy manager, and, and every single one of those calls and emails from our residents and their concerns. But rest assured that we will continue to do what we've been doing, and, and then some. I'm extremely happy and proud to report that at the annual National Savvy Awards Ceremony, the city of Dania Beach was honored and awarded once again. We received the Award of Excellence in the recurring event category for the City-County Communications and Marketing Association. This category honors events that occur more than once, and demonstrates sustained strategic planning, brand consistency, and long-term community engagement. The evolution of Dania After Dark and the collaboration between Parks and Recreation and our marketing team is instrumental and unprecedented. And, and, and I want to inform and, and put it on the record, at Oktoberfest, six or seven thousand residents come into our city. This is more than a lot of what cities in South Florida have in, in total population. Dania Beach is not just a bedroom community or a drive-through community. Dania Beach is a destination, and that's why we invest in storm drainage. That's why we invest in public safety. Because I will tell you, just the, the work that has occurred with budgeting, what we have been able to do in regards to our relationship with BSO, and the eight percent that we have been able to negotiate for a five-year contract, please note that there are cities, neighboring cities, such as West Palm Beach, counties such as West Palm Beach, excuse me, that are competing and poaching our public safety team members of our city. So one of the things that makes us extremely effective is the stability that we have in the city, the stability in the office of the manager, in the office of community development, in the office of HR, in public safety, in finance, and I can go on and on and on. And that return on the investment is extremely vital, vital to our city. And the commitment of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commissioners to ensure that one of their top priorities, besides public safety, is ensuring that we retain, promote, and recruit the very best, because responsiveness is extremely important to us. I also want to let you all know that for the past couple of weeks, we have been non-stop in communications, requesting meetings from Broward County Schools. Our residents, our taxpayers, invest over forty million dollars in our three public schools, but yet, for the past several years, two out of the three schools that you, our residents, and our taxpayer, invest more than forty million dollars, have been threatened to close. And all of us, all of us have had a full-court press in regards to representation and ensuring that our schools don't close, because what it's done to the psyche of our kids, our community, and our teachers is really unacceptable. Twice last week, we had meetings with them, including on Friday, that including Dr. Hepburn, our superintendent. Let me put it on the record, while this city has had the same city manager and the same deputy city manager, for six and a half, half years, Broward County Schools has had not one, not two, not three, not four, but five superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. And that matters. That matters. So I couldn't be more proud. And we will be there, front and center, this Wednesday, at South Broward High, to continue to fight for our schools, our kids, our community, and our teachers. And that's very, very important to note. I'm very, very, very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department, and the leadership of Director Warren, and our deputies, and every single one of those individuals that serve us in Parks and Recreation. Two weeks ago, I did a thorough walkthrough at CW Thomas Park, an unprecedented investment in parks, in excess of twenty-one million dollars. We're not a city of one or two parks. We are a city of more than twenty-six parks, and we continue to invest in our parks, historic preservation. And let me remind everyone that's here, watching on TV, we had to close city facilities. We had a very dangerous situation at the Nyberg Swanson. We had to close the Dania Beach Grill. We have invested in our city pier, and we continue to invest in the aging infrastructure in a very, very proactive and strategic manner in our city. And we are very, very pleased to let you know that the last piece of the demolition to complete the project at CW will be demolished in mid-October. Our mayor is getting ready with all her notes and the game plan to liver, to deliver another mayor on the move to continue to inform you of this very, very exciting project in our city. Also, know, residents, that we continue to have our core meetings. We just don't expect you to come and meet with us here at City Hall, but we've been going into your neighborhoods consistently to get to know you. I just got the, the pleasure and the honor to, to meet Robert. It's such a pleasure. And always know that we are here, available. Call us, we, we will meet with you and answer any question, but those core meetings, and thank you, because all of you have really ensured that you support that, and it's extremely, extremely important. It's very, very important that we are at the final stage of a project, a, a very, very interesting and, and unique project that was brought to us by Commissioner Ryan. And we are going to be unveiling, because we are in the final stage of the project for our new city service club sign, that had unanimous report, uh, support and, and approval, and the design is, is complete, and we are going to be unveiling this project. We are extremely excited about it. And last but not least, on September the thirtieth, we will officially be cutting the ribbon and showing the world what the partnership that we have with Wyland, a nationally renowned artist, and the investment that has come forward for art, which I know will be another award-winning project, that it's all privately funded by the private sector and these developers. It's truly, truly remarkable. And again, as we close out this fiscal year, I just couldn't be prouder of the team that we have, and all the people that have really given their efforts, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week. And I thank you for your support, and it's truly an honor to serve as your city manager. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, Commissioner.
Thank you, City Manager, for that very thorough report. Up next, we have our item six point two, City Attorney.
I'm gonna keep it short, there's no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Your next meeting is on September twenty-fifth, which is the final budget hearing and regular city commission meeting, beginning at seven PM. Then your next meeting is beginning on October fourteenth, for your CRA at six PM, and your city commission meeting at seven PM. Also in your packets tonight is your advisory board attendance report. I know that that was asked for, so you have that with you, and I believe Erin reached out to a couple of you regarding some of your board members' attendance. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, City Clerk. Up next, we have our public safety reports, Captain Jason Tarala.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. So I'll start off, earlier this year, I met with the city manager, and we were getting complaints around the seven-eleven in the, about the fifteen-hundred block of South Federal Highway. I also got complaints from some of the commissioners, the vice mayor, reference complaints from our citizens. So I want to let you know that I had two of our deputies, our patrol deputies, Deputy Rika and Deputy Morjan, that is their zones. And I want to let you know, since I put them on this task of, of the complaints that we had in conducting enforcement operations, those two deputies alone have made sixty-four arrests in the corridor of the fifteen-hundred block of South Federal Highway, focusing in the seven-eleven, the roadways, the bus benches, the alleyways, and the stores and restaurants around that area. They have, single-handedly, the two of those deputies, proactively cleaned up that neighborhood in that area. The seven-eleven owner who complained is extremely happy. My deputies speak to him daily, and it has been completely change of scenery at the seven-eleven, as well as the barbecue shop, that is the barbecue restaurant, excuse me, that is next to the seven-eleven area, who he made a complaint about issues going on. We have cleaned up that area. Deputy Rika and Morjan have been extremely, extremely proactive in that area, and I think you have seen as a big change in that area over there due to their hard work. So I want to let you know about the arrests that they've made, reference the complaints that we received, and that we were very proactive on that. Another proactive case I want to let you know about, think a couple of months ago, we received an email in the area of thirty-six, Southwest Eleventh Street, if you remember, reference the house over there. A gentleman was very upset, saying that he contacted BSO, we weren't doing anything. I let you know, I let the city manager know that we were well aware of that house, but we were working on an investigation there, so it's not that we weren't doing anything, but we were working an investigation with undercover assets. Last week, we ended up doing a search warrant on that resident, thirty-six, Southwest Eleventh Street, with our SWAT team, reference multiple undercover narcotic investigations that we were doing at that residence. During the narcotics search warrant, we were able to find fentanyl inside the residence, and we've also identified multiple subjects who are now going to have felony narcotic charges placed on them. We're sending the KPS, we're sending, I'm sorry, the probable cause affidavits to the state attorney's office for warrants, and we will arrest them once the warrants are signed, and we will go pick them up. We've identified multiple subjects from that residence who are now going to be picked up for felon narcotics. So hopefully that will clean up that neighborhood, that area. We were well aware of that residence, and hopefully now that will quiet down that residence. We were well aware of that residence, and hopefully now that will quiet down that street. Lastly, last week, Deputy Rika, Morjan, and Chavez, they observed a stolen vehicle in our northwest section. While they were attempting to keep their eyes on it, the individual and the vehicle went the wrong way. He ended up making a U-turn, and as he was coming out of one of our marked units, they observed the female trying to exit the vehicle, and she being pulled back inside the vehicle. At that point, our deputies initiated a vehicle pursuit of the vehicle. The vehicle ended up going towards Federal Highway, and it ended up, the driver ended up bailing out of the vehicle at Sterling Road in Federal Highway. The driver ended up bailing out of the car, running into Jackson's Ice Cream, where he was arrested by our deputies and taken into custody. It just so happens that individual on top of the auto theft charges we had and the multiple other felonies we had on him for that incident, this individual driver, which we learned was also wanted for an attempted murder that happened in Dana a week earlier, where he stabbed an individual. So that was a fantastic arrest, and again, getting out, getting off a very violent offender off of our streets. It was a great job by those deputies. And lastly, I'd like to take the time real quick, we have a new patrol lieutenant in the city. Our Alpha Ship Patrol Lieutenant, I know some of you have met him, some of you haven't, but I wanted to take the time to formally introduce him to this commission. This is Lieutenant Matt Robertson, he's been with the agency for thirteen years. He started in Dana Beach, and he actually worked for me when I was here as a sergeant in two thousand and twelve. When, while he was here as a deputy, he was a field training deputy. He was also a member of our crime suppression team. He got promoted to sergeant, and he was transferred to the West Park District, where he worked patrol, as well as administrative sergeant in West Park. He recently got promoted to lieutenant, and I was able to ask the upper command if I could get him back to Dana Beach, because I knew he would be the perfect fit. I talked to the city manager about it, and she was in agreement, and we brought him here. And I can tell you right now, I know you've had run-ins with him already, manager, and I know Commissioner Wellen has, and I think he's a fantastic fit for the city and where we want to go. And I will let him introduce himself to this commission, for those of you who have not met him yet.
Hello. Just wanna say it's truly an honor to be back in Dana Beach. I have a lot of love, I started my career here in Dana. And when I left about six and a half, seven years ago to what the city is today, it's unrecognizable, it's amazing. And it's a testament to the commission and the city manager. I would bring my wife here, I'd bring my kids here, and I couldn't have said that about seven years ago. So I just wanna introduce myself and say thank you, guys, for having me back.
Thank you, Lieutenant, welcome.
And lastly, before I leave, I just want to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission for your continued support for the Broward Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Tony and myself, and the men and women of the Broward Sheriff's Office who protect and serve the residents of Dana Beach. I want to thank the city manager for your leadership and your partnership with the Broward Sheriff's Office and entrusting Sheriff Tony, entrusting myself to lead Dana Beach. As you know, Dana Beach was the first contract city with the Broward Sheriff's Office, so we have a very special partnership. And again, I want to say thank you so much for continuing the partnership. And I do want you to know, Sheriff Tony is very involved. He knows everything of importance that goes on in Dana Beach. Whenever I see him, he asks me how the residents, what's going on in the city. He always asks me how the commission's doing, the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission, and then he'll say, "How's Anna doing? Everything good." He has a great relationship with the city, he knows everything going on. He'll always ask me something unfortunate, if we have something critical or a serious incident, he'll ask me about it, and he'll say, "How was it? How the deputies do? How's the city?" He's very involved, and he knows everything going on here, and I know you have a great relationship with him, and so does a lot of the commission here. But I do want to let you know, he values this partnership and this relationship as we do. So I want to tell you thank you so much for continuing and entrusting us to provide law enforcement and fire rescue for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you for all you do, and welcome, Lieutenant. Chief Pelisara, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and the great citizens of Dana Beach. I want to start off by saying thank you for your continued support. It was an awesome September eleventh commemoration that we had. It's a sad day for our country, it's a sad day for us to remember that tragic day, but the support that I had from staff, the support I had from the citizens. I've never seen so many citizens, and like we planned four and a half years ago, we're gonna grow it every year, so thank you for the continued support. Our fire inspectors are at ninety-seven percent, that includes all their plant review, annual inspections, permanent inspections. So by September thirtieth, we'll be a hundred percent, like we're always at a hundred percent when it comes to fire inspections. Our fleet manager went up and looked, take a look at our ladder fire truck that's being refurbished. He called me up right from there, he goes, "This truck looks brand new." Even though the truck is older, it's got completely refurbished, everything's tip-top on it. And with that being said, sometime in December, we'll have it here and plan to do a pushing ceremony, as it should be. Our recruits and our partnership with Dana Point, we always do the five K run, so I look forward to, well, maybe not running, we'll walk a little. But we'll, the recruits can run it, and we'll walk it together. But that's what we do every year, we support our partners in Dana Point, and we always do the five K run. And then, as soon as that ends, we'll begin our preparations for our holiday season, which, you know, we'll be doing the toy drive, so I'll encourage our citizens out there to support us come November, when it comes to the toy drive. Does anybody have any questions? No, again, I echo the same thing that Captain Tarralla said. Thank you for the partnership with the Sheriff's Office, we appreciate you, and the men and women in the fire service appreciate you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and we appreciate you. And I just want to thank you for the great job that your team did with the nine eleven ceremony. It was very heartfelt, and we really appreciate how you elevate it every year, so great job, and continue to do that. All right, thank you. So next, we have our citizens' comments. Oh, we have our citizens' comments. Is Cindy Pascal still here? Cindy, is that you? Nope, did she leave? Okay, do I have any other citizens' comments? All right, we got, and, all right, Robert, I'll have you come up first. I think I know them all by name now.
We're all gonna get to know each other, I'm sure.
Just go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Kirchgruber, I live in Dana Beach, Florida. I see the clock's ticking. Rules of decorum, you all break the rules of decorum. Clapping. Yeah, when someone in the audience in the gallery here clapped, they were shut down. Just want to make a point. Is that fair? Is that fair to shut our citizens down, but when you all want to do a proclamation, it's not fair. Just something. And when you read the rules of decorum, I encourage our attorneys and city managers to review those and make sure that we're not violating anyone's rights with regards to speak or to be held in the Fourth Amendment with regards to being protected in their identity. Okay? And the other thing I'd like to bring up, and this is nothing personal, but with regards to travel and things like that, I don't understand why we need to spend money on travel to go to symposiums. I'd like to know, find out what the ROI is on that and what the city's actually gonna be gaining by going to this conference in Tampa, okay? That's been approved. Yeah, what the purpose is. It's on the consent agenda right here, it's the next item. Okay, I don't understand that, yet a couple of years ago, everything was done remotely. Why do we have to spend the money? What's the return on investment? Why do we need to go there? And have we gone there in the past, and have we gained anything from that? So just a little bit of concern on that. I'm not here to pick on y'all, it's just perception of the public, okay? It's perception of the public, and I know I'm losing my time here. I parked in the city garage, you know what I see right in the front row? I don't see parking for veterans, I don't see parking for the disabled, minimal. I see minimal disabled parking, I don't see parking for our veterans, I don't see parking for seniors or pregnant mothers or people, okay? And with that being said, you know what I do see? I see spots reserved for council members. So when you're not here doing business, those can't be used, right? And if I park there, or someone parks there, they're gonna get towed, that's not fair. Y'all work for us, you can park just like the rest of us, and reopen up those spaces for veterans, pregnant mothers, and other people with disabilities. And I encourage you to consider that. Once again, folks, it's about perception. And the perception is that you all need to care about the citizens in Dana Beach. I know it's a nice little perk, but I think it's something that needs to happen. I'm a little concerned about the shuttle service, entering a two-year agreement with them, but, you know, it's sixty-eight dollars an hour, from what I understand, to run the buses. But what is, how many people are actually using those services? Do we have an actual head count on the number of people? Do they count the people that get in and off of those buses? I don't know, but these are some of the answers I'm gonna find out.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much, I hope you take them into consideration.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next up, we have Mr. DeRosa. Mr. DeRosa, please state your name and address for the record, I guess.
Good evening, Sean DeRosa, four oh eight Southeast Fifth Street. As you all know, I shared information with you over the last couple of years pertaining to false and accurate reporting from our BSO deputies that was negatively impacting trying to bring repeat habitual violators into compliance. And sadly, one of the officers, Deputy Daniel Munoz, I had to politely ask you all to please never have him dispatched to my home, because for my family's sake and my sake, we felt unsafe and that his false and inaccurate reporting would lead to us getting hurt and/or killed. In November, he was dispatched to our home again, as you all know. It was a horrible incident. And again, I summarize to you all, as you all ask us, if you see or hear something, say something. And it makes me wonder, do you really mean it? Do you really want to hear something from us that's not right? And every time I share something, it's supported by audio/video evidence. So, my last, my last comments in writing to you all were in November and December to you all, Sheriff Tony, Captain Tarralla. Deputy Munoz is gonna get someone hurt and/or killed, please do not have him dispatched to my home. I don't have trust or confidence in his reporting. Lo and behold, forty-five days later, there's a triple murder in Tamarack. Deputy Munoz somehow is involved in that, and these are Sheriff Tony's comments. We fell short on this one in terms of how some of the patrol personnel had documented certain facts. We're gonna have to address this more, this is just a matter of what I've seen is piss-poor performance, complacency, and people not doing their due diligence. I was waving my hands, saying, "Hey, there's a problem." I have law enforcement in my family, multiple people in law enforcement. They've looked at all the evidence, they've said to me, "Sean, obviously, something's not right." They took the high road. So now, after nine months of investigation, Deputy Daniel Munoz's employment has been terminated with Broward Sheriff's Office. I don't know why staff members, it appears, have tried to undermine my credibility. I've told you the truth, you have the audio and video to back it up. I will show up at any forum, you can record me, they've recorded me under sworn oath before. I'm not here to waste your all's time. I don't want to see residents get hurt. I don't want to see my family get hurt, and you may think it's funny, you may not think it's serious, but the facts speak for themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Do we have any other comments from the public? Anybody else wish to speak from the public? Mr. McCall, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Cody McCall, thirty-three Southeast Wild Street. I want to start by, you know, commenting on the Rowland County Sheriff's Office. I've had a good experience with them. I do support law enforcement, and I think that it's only fair to give credit where credit is due. You know, it's unfortunate to hear about the, you know, the events that unfolded, but the experiences that I've had with Broward County law enforcement have been positive, and I'm grateful to that. In this budget, I'm also, you know, grateful for the investment that we've made in public safety. We may not agree on everything, we may not agree on every topic, but I think that investing in public safety is a wise decision. In part of disagreeing, I invite discourse, it doesn't make me uncomfortable. All of the things that I have presented have been based on your own audit. So if there are any misinformation in your audit, I would invite you to read it into the record. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Any other comments from the public? Come on up, Ms. Lair.
Ray Lair, the estates of Fort Lauderdale. I just want to say thank you for listening to us, especially me. And I don't appreciate the fact that what we put out on the internet is being considered lies and misinformation. We do a lot of research when we put stuff out, just like we did for the airport. We researched our butts off before we put anything out. And I want to address the thing that you're offended, Marco, by people holding you to your campaign promises. Well then, I mean, why run if you're not gonna do what you say you're gonna do? And then you get mad because we want to hold your feet to the fire? That upsets me.
Larry, let's not make it personal, I'm trying not to. Person, just as a general comment, please, thank you.
So Brendan and I will be over tomorrow to collect our checks.
All right, coming back up, Miss Shalifer?
Yep, one more, one last hurrah, if you will. Thank you, and thank you for listening to me this evening for whatever it's worth. I know I'll sleep better saying what I had to say and leaving you with this. Brenda Shalifer, Dana Beach. For the record, just because BSO doesn't have the statistics, doesn't mean there's no crime. So to say there is no crime is disingenuous. Also, for all of us, it's just plain rude to disparage people who come before you and try and make it better. Mr. McCall has done a phenomenal job trying to help us. Embrace it, what are you afraid of? He's got a lot of good stuff to offer. Why disparage him? Why call it false information? And again, it's from your audits. He's not making this stuff up. Same thing with Sean DeRosa. Summarily dismissed, unacceptable. And to some extent, Ray. We kind of come here to try and make things better, sorry if we don't. I'll leave you with two bucket list items I have for the city of Dana Beach. I want to file a text amendment to repeal what you just passed. The Beach Gateway District, also known as, developed the hell out of it. Outrageous. I want to roll it back to what it was. We can do that by filing a text amendment. I know you won't vote for it. I know where your allegiances are, it's not with us, I get that, but I'm gonna do it nonetheless. I get that, but I'm gonna do it nonetheless. Also, I beg you, please look at what's going on with your special magistrate. I know he's supposed to be an independent guy. I get that. As former counsel, I understand that. But he's not following your code. Y'all sat here when you changed the noise ordinance and the short-term rental ordinance. And basically said zero tolerance on violations. That's what I heard. Maybe you didn't mean it. You said escalating funds. These things are not happening. A prima facie case of violation brought forth by staff, written up correctly. Thank you, staff. And this guy has the nerve to say, well, what kind of music was playing? What? This is the nuts running the asylum. You gotta get ahold of this. It's inappropriate. And in the time you've had, this fabulous short-term rental ordinance, ten years, twelve years, not one has been suspended. You wanna know why? 'Cause the special magistrate's not doing his job. Thank you, Ms. Shalifer. Have a good day. I'm going home. Peace out. Thank, thank you for coming and speaking. Follow through on that text amendment. And thank you for listening. Thank you for coming. Next, we have the item nine point, item nine, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I wish...
Ms., Ms. Shalifer, we, you have, Ms., Ms. Shalifer, you cannot speak out loud right now. Um, Ms., Ms. Shalifer, I'm gonna have, please, please do not make me do this. You cannot just speak out in public. We're going to have to...
I want to pull an item from the consent.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking to the commission right now, Ms. Shalifer.
All right. I'll wait.
But I need you to sit down. I'm talking to the commission right now.
I'll wait.
Thank you. Uh, I know that Commissioner Llewellyn had an item to pull. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I, I'd like to pull item nine point three.
Item nine point three. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to pull item nine point four. So I'll pass the consent agenda with the exception of item nine point three and nine point four.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull a consent agenda item.
Ms. Shalifer, I, I, this is...
You know, I'm going by Broward County rules, and you know what?
You have to be recognized by the mayor. And I'm sorry, Ms. Shalifer, I, I really, this is, this is, this is my last time. This is the commission's item. You have not been recognized. I will recognize you at a later time. But right now, we're going to have the consent agenda.
I wanna pull a consent agenda item. I wanna speak on a consent agenda item.
Ms. Shalifer.
You're saying I can't speak on a consent agenda item?
I, I'm going to refer to our city attorney and find out what the rules are with that. But I need you to sit down because you have not been recognized. I will talk to the city attorney and find out what the rules are for this. But you cannot get up and speak without being recognized. We will have order, no matter what. So I will refer to our city attorney to let us know what the public's rights are as far as being able to pull a consent agenda item. Uh, I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan. Uh, and do I have a second from the commission?
I'll second.
Have a second from Commissioner Llewellyn. Now, I will hear from the city attorney on this item, and then we will move forward.
Um, we don't follow the Broward County's rule for their decorum of their meetings. These are our rules, and our rules provide for citizens' comments, which was already provided.
So, citizens cannot pull consent agenda items per our laws?
I got, I got the evidence I need. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Llewellyn, did you wanna discuss item nine point three?
Mayor, did you wanna call for a vote?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just for the ones that were passed?
So we have the motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye. Except for item nine point three and item nine point four. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes with the exception of item nine point three and nine point four. All right, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, um, item nine point three. I know this was Commissioner Ryan's request to use contingency funds for a number of things for the American Legion. I'm, I'm good with most of it. My concern is that it's a private building, privately owned. And putting the amount of money that's being requested for renovations inside and outside of it, I'm concerned that it's going to set a precedent that other private organizations are going to be seeking the same sort of requests. And I have a potential solution. And I don't know if we can do this or not. I've, I've, I've talked to a couple people about it. But I know that we have some, a number of city buildings that we are in the process of doing things with, including the MC Frost House and others. If there might be a way to put that money towards that, because it's a city building instead. I'm just, I'm mostly concerned about the precedent that it sets because we have a number of private organizations that have clubhouses and whatnot. And if, and I feel like if we do it for one, we start getting requests from other people to do the same sort of things. And they are private organizations. So, and I don't know if anybody can speak to that about moving the money to something else? Or if you wanna speak as well, Commissioner?
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, regarding my item, this is for the American Legion Post 304. They are a, a non-for-profit organization. And I know the building is privately owned by the American Legion. But thi- this goes towards not just their renovation, but it goes towards their programming also. It goes towards the events that they have at the Legion, uh, like towards their Veterans Day and towards Boy State and Girl State as well. So there's, it's not just about renovating the Legion. It's also about supporting their programs and supporting them. I think they've been great partners to us and us as well. And I, I get it that you guys might be, you know, approached regarding your contingency funds. But, you know, that, I think we should, we all have our own responsibility to hold ourselves accountable in how we distribute those contingency funds. And I know that, um, the commander at Post 304 was very cooperative with the city and did everything that was asked of him above and beyond. So I'm, I'm very comfortable by distributing my contingency funds of this amount towards the American Legion. And, um, yeah, you know, I understand why you wanted to pull it. Uh, and I get where you're coming from. But really, it, it is, it does come down to us with the contingency funds. And, and I think this met all the requirements. After we definitely put a lot more red tape on our contingency funds, I think this still is required. It doesn't exceed any maximum amount or anything like that. It's towards the American Legion Post 304. You know, been with the city since nineteen nineteen. So it's, um, I, I, I think it's a, I think it's money well-invested back into the community. 'Cause, uh, American Legion has a lot of veterans that live in the city. A lot of seniors are involved. And they look forward to the programming and events they have. Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, so on and so forth. And, and, and Boy State, as you know, I'm, you know, big proponent of that.
Boy State, I have no issue with. I, then that, that amount, 'cause that was sixteen hundred dollars. I don't have an issue with that at all. I, I, I'm fine with that. And I'm not sure what the disaster relief is, but if it's something, I, I, I don't really have an issue with that either. It was just the inside renovation and the outside repairs, which totaled sixty-five hundred dollars, that concern me. And like I said, and it's, and, and I know, and, and look, we all support our American Legion. We all go there. We all spend time for their events. We, several of us were there for the installation of the newest officers, um, or the new, new board. I just, like I said, I'm just concerned about the precedent that it sets, given the fact that we do have other city facilities that do need renovations and that sort of thing as well. So, um, you know, if, if you wanna move forward with it and, and get a motion in a second and have the votes, and so be it. It's fine. I, I just, I wanted to make sure that we're looking at it. And I'm, just wanted to bring it to the attention. That's all.
Understood.
So is there a motion on this, then? Or just move forward with it? What do we have?
Yes, I think it, is that part of the CRA?
Is it?
Yeah, like maybe do, um, maybe, maybe like, uh, that's a good idea. Um, like a facade grant.
Yeah, I was thinking if it was in CRA...
If it's in the CRA. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do we have, oh, yeah, come, yeah, let's be recognized. We're all contained. Uh, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I mean, I want to be able to say yes to this. So, um, is there a possibility that we could do the inside and outside renovations through a CRA facade grant? I guess that's a question.
I will just speak on it from this perspective. We have our own twenty-five thousand dollar funds to be able to spend on the projects that meet the criteria for our discretionary funds. I have absolutely no problem. This is Post 304. This is our American Legion. If Commissioner Ryan wants to spend ten thousand dollars on the programs, on the renovations, this is in our city. This is his discretionary funds. I have no problem with supporting that. So, um, if you guys want to do that, or, you know, start looking into other people and how they use their discretionary funds, you know, I, I, I just think we need to be cautionary when we, when we do that.
Mayor, I wasn't, I, that's not what I was saying.
I, I need to finish.
Yeah, but you, you're making an allegation.
I'm not going to have you disrupting me. I didn't, I've not talked...
I was given an idea.
Excuse me.
I'm not gonna...
I, I will run this meeting as the mayor. And I will not have shouting out. And there, we will have respectful discourse. And I will speak, and you will be recognized in a proper way. And we will have decorum on this day. If you disagree, there is a way to disagree. And I'm not speaking directly to any commissioner. When I'm talking about the discretionary funds, I am talking about the funds that we are allowed to use. This has nothing to do with your personal statement. I am just stating how I feel that we should use our discretionary funds, period. And I am ready to move on. We have a motion. And do we have a second? Sure. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I, I think that before we moved on, I was curious to the answer to Commissioner Ramoli's question. Because if, if I could get the, uh, the definition of what he's asking for, then it would be decided whether or not that we need to move on and, and vote against it, or we could take the funds from that. And that's, I'm just curious if that would work or not. If not, and we can't use that, then it gives me a different opinion of how I wanna vote for this. Does that make sense? So I guess am I, uh, is there a way that we can get an answer, Mayor, in regards to that?
As far as the CRA is concerned?
Well, the, the funding of a facade, is that eligible for facade grant? That we would be able to bring it back to the CRA at the next meeting and ask for a facade grant, apply for a facade grant to do what Commissioner Ramoli's asking for? So if it, if that qualifies for a facade grant, then what we would do is we would vote no at this point and take the facade grant. Or we could apply some, at least our, maybe we, out of our own discretionary, we could use the other half of it that meets up to it, or whatever it comes up to. So we don't have to put the whole amount out of the city, out of our own discretionary, which you're asking us to do instead of putting it out of the city's discretionary. Is that what, does that sound like? Does that sound right?
Candido?
Okay, can I say something before?
I'll, I'll let Candido speak, and then you can speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. As far as the facade grant, it, it could be applied for, but that would only cover the exterior, not interior renovations.
Does it cover the a hundred percent of the exterior?
Uh, there, there is a cap to it.
But it's only five thousand dollars.
Oh, the, it would cover that. And, but, but I also believe, I have to go back to the rules, that there's a match criteria to it. So we would work with the individual, and we would assist them. Uh, but it's only for the exterior.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to state that it was fifteen hundred dollars for the exterior. It's just for fascia boards and, uh, what else was it? What, they're fixing fascia boards and venting. So, you know, for them, without them going through more red tape, uh, I, I think fifteen hundred dollars out of my discretionary funds is good enough for them to just make the outside repairs. They, they, they didn't wanna go over the top with that at all. Um, but, yeah, if we wanna walk them through a facade grant, maybe in the future, that's fine. But the, the, I just wanted to be known on the record, this is fifteen hundred dollars for, you know, I think they're building, yeah, for the outside. And I think their building is like, you know, it's probably, uh, you know, three, thirty-five hundred square foot building. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Ramoli?
Uh, so, again, when I brought that up, it was a suggestion as a idea. Um, I'm not trying to tell people how to use their own discretionary funds. But I thought that, um, we are here to collaborate and to come up with ideas to better serve our citizens and to better ways of using our monies. And it was just an idea. If I offended someone by making an idea, may perhaps I shouldn't give ideas anymore on this day. But I, I second the motion.
I have a first, and I have a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda item nine point three passes. Four to one. You said nay, Commissioner, um, Llewellyn? All right, four to one, passes. All right, uh, item nine point four. Please read that.
The resolution of the city commission, in its capacity as the Board of Trustees for the Memorial Park and Western, West Lawn Cemeteries, to amend the cemetery rules and regulations establishing the policy that solely Dania Beach residents and their immediate families and direct descendants may utilize mausoleum spaces and entombments and cemetery plots and other cemetery services. Exception. And modifying the city's fee schedule to clarify that the non-resident fee is only for plots purchased prior to September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, provided for conflicts and ineffective date public services.
Okay, Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, this is the item that I wanted to pull. First and foremost, I really wanna congratulate, well, not congratulate. I just wanna thank Sean and our city staff for actually fi- looking into this and discovering that this is a, an issue, and it's something that we need to address as soon as possible. Our cemetery plots are filling up faster than they've ever had. And we've been around, everybody's been saying a hundred twenty years all night. And our, our cemetery's never had any threats of being full. And when, and I knew this was gonna happen. Once we made it public, we've had an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of, I think we had fifty-two applicants since the last time we discussed this, right? That's, that's, that's incredible. Compared to having, what, twenty-six regular residents in the last, like, year or two? So I, first and foremost, thank you for addressing this issue. I liked it when it was first presented that it was residents-only to Dania Beach. I feel like when we're now saying residents and immediate family, and then their direct descendants from immediate family, we're really not solving the problem here. We are opening up to everybody, right? I, I can, I can have a brother-in-law that lives in, in Georgia, and then therefore he gets in, and then his whole family descendants gets in the cemetery. It's pretty much the same thing. It, I, I don't think this is preserving our plots in any way. And I don't wanna approach the idea of building a million-dollar mausoleum, you know, to compensate for this. We could really just regulate it more. You have to be a resident of Dania Beach to, to own a cemetery plot in here. And I know we talk about, oh, being buried next to my family. Look, I have family, I have plenty, probably more family than any of you guys here buried in the cemetery. And I can't just buy a plot next to them. It's already taken. So you, it's not like, oh, there's my great-grandfather, he's buried there, so I'm just gonna buy a plot next to him. No, they're already all taken up. So if you want a plot next to your wife, or your brother, or your sister, you gotta buy them all right there at once in bulk. So it, I, I, I don't see the notion of that being like, oh, I wanna be buried next to my mom 'cause she was buried in the cemetery fifty years ago. So I, I, I wanted to make a couple friendly amendments to this to make it just Dania Beach residents, and that's it. And you have to be a Dania Beach resident. If you're living in the city and you buy your plot, then, and then you move out, you could always come back. But what, it's a thousand dollars for a resident? So, you know, what, I'm thirty-six years old. So if I really wanna be buried in Dania Beach whenever that day comes, then I would have to invest a thousand dollars now, and Lord knows it's gonna happen in the future. But at least I... in the future, but at least I secured my plot. I don't need to come back and be like, oh, by the way, I, I want to get married, buried here. Or, you know, we came on vacation here one time as a family. It looks like a nice cemetery to be buried. And it's, it's, it's just, um, I don't think it's solving the problem by opening it up that much. When we talk about in-laws and half-sisters and stepsisters, you know, it's, uh, it, it's, it's gonna fill up probably within that four or five years. And then where are we stuck then? We're gonna talk about building mausoleums that are probably gonna fill up another four or five years, right? And then there's really not much of return investment on that, which I understand. You know, we have to have a cemetery, but the fact that we even have plots of land that you could purchase to be buried underground, that's very rare nowadays. Real estate is very expensive. So, and it, we have to make this more exclusive, I would say. I would be, I'd be opposed to raising the fee. I mean, I'd be in favor of raising the fee also, but I'm okay with it now. I just want to keep it at residence. I know we could change it later. And I, I, I'm okay with, uh, you know, the, any former elected official, that's fine. That, there's not that many of them. And I would like to change the date of prior to September 17th. I don't think we need to wait all the way till September 25th, 10 days from now. And if, if the commission likes to discuss that further, I'd be happy to discuss with you. But those are my two big, big changes. Is just residents only and then September 17th.
You can even do today's date, the 15th is fine.
Okay, do it today then. If it passes today, we'll do it today.
Okay, I have discussion from Vice Mayor.
Thank you. A couple of comments on that. I, I agree with some of Commissioner Ryan's say, uh, sayings. Um, I think the findings that have come up with, from Sean that, you know, extended out, I can, uh, the concern is, is understandable. Um, I, I don't know about how far we refine this. Maybe the refining went to a little bit too far. I was looking, when I made the comment to bring this up, I would think I was talking about family members and, and I don't know how you can even define it to a point where, uh, you know, you have a, a family member and I keep refr, refraining to a God forbid situation where, you know, your daughter or your son moves into another state and they're not a Dania Beach resident. And then you would want them buried in another state or another city when they're by themselves, possibly going to a, a job that they're working in a hospital in, in Georgia. But if they pass from something, they can't be brought back to their hometown. And that's where I have a problem with. It's not, it's not a situation where I don't want their in-laws and their outlaws and whatever else you want to bring into that. Um, it's just that the, the definition is there and, and I'm not happy with this itself, but I'm not happy with Dania Beach residents only. Um, I, I mean, I'm gonna ask, you know, there's no way of, of table in this again, in this consent. Only way we table is to vote no and bring it back up again and refine it a little bit more and work on it a little bit more because I just, I'm not happy with the way it reads that you have now. And I'm not happy with your way of doing it either. I'm not saying my way is right of doing it, but I think that there, it just seems like there's a better way to, um, figure it out. That's one thing. The other thing is, is on the mausoleums, uh, you know, when you talk about a million dollar cost on that, I, I know that the mausoleum that, uh, that we have there, we have a couple of them. And there's a lot of places in there. And I know that they're very expensive because I have some in there. And, um, purchasing those, I don't know, I think I had requested a, a figure that I didn't receive on how much it would cost to bill that. And you're saying it's a million dollars, but I didn't hear that from Sean. Okay, okay. So, all right. So the $900,000 to bill that, I, I must have missed it in the backup or something. But the, um, the $900,000, if you filled it up, how much would you have collected for all those spots? How much? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, look, yeah. Do what, what, what?
Thank you very much. Um, we did do an analysis on that as well. It would be about 1.8 million based on current rates right now.
If you sold them out.
Sold them all out.
So one, you're, so you're collecting 1.8 million to, to sell them out and pay $900,000 to build it.
Correct.
So how are we losing any money on that is what my question would have been. So what, it seems more feasible that if we wanted to take and utilize, and how much space on the ground, uh, uh, grounds, plots would you lose by doing that? Would you lose?
120.
120?
120 spaces on the ground.
And how much do you get for 120 spaces?
You'd gain 240 slots, which are for caskets in the mausoleum, and 130, uh, they're called niches for the urns.
Okay, so.
So net about, what is that, uh, 120 plus 130, 250.
So what I'm saying is how much did you sell the ground plots for?
Approximately, I, I think it's $3,300.
So I mean, the, the gross amount for the lost spots? The gross, the gross sales?
Depends on the time of day, but I think we're, or excuse me, the day of the week, but it's about, let's say, $3,500 per plot.
Okay, so times what?
Times remaining.
Yeah.
Of 1,400.
So that's about, about $500,000 that we would be collecting for the ground spots. But do you understand what I'm saying?
The 100, of the 120 or something.
Yeah, so we collect about five or six hundred thousand. So we're collecting over, over a million, nearly a million and a half by selling the mausoleum, costing $900,000, $900,000 to build it. I don't understand why we wouldn't build more mausoleums in that spot, allow more spaces to be built and collect more money that's gonna take to put in there. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me unless everybody, unless, I did realize that you did say that the majority of the people would rather have a ground spot than a mausoleum.
That's what we see, a, a much higher rate on the purchase of.
Okay, I get, I get all that. I guess it's a matter of though, when, like, Commissioner Ryan said, uh, commercial real estate is expensive and the sooner or later you're gonna run out of spots and there's not gonna be any spots left for anybody to begin with. So, you know, in the future, looking down the road, that we would need to go either up, up with spots or not. I mean, that's just a matter of preference. Uh, I mean, you know, I've got both. I've got family members in the ground there and I've got family members above the ground there. So as long as there's a family member in that cemetery, I'm okay with where it's upper end. So, uh, that's just my opinion. But, uh, I, what I'm asking, I get this at this time, is that I'm still not satisfied with the, um, the resolution on how it's described. And I don't know what we can do to, if we, if we pass it, can we amend it later on? Or can we redo, or can we table it and redo it again? Because I, I, I mean, I, at this point, I would vote against it and I don't want to do that. I want the Dania Beach residents to have a priority, but I also feel like maybe we need to extend it one step, not three or four steps. That's, that's my opinion.
City Attorney?
Um, just one thing. I would ask whatever you do tonight to do something, to take action on the resolution, um, with modifications, whatever, only because the longer it's out there, the more non-residents get to purchase.
That's what I said. I'd rather, I'd rather go ahead and pass it and, and stop the, the, the process of people buying spots tonight. And then, then maybe amend it later on if we can redo it. Is that?
You know, the, just so we're clear, the immediate family right now is mom, dad, spouse or domestic partner, children, and then of course there's stepchildren, half siblings, whatever. You know, maybe the only open-ended maybe is the in-laws, if you want to take out in-laws.
Yeah.
And, and maybe that'll help satisfy you, uh, Vice Mayor.
But, but also what you're saying is, you said children and what else did you say?
Steps, steps.
Well, sisters and this and that. But the thing is that they're not a Dania Beach resident anymore and they're living somewhere else. That means they're not a Dania Beach resident, even though it's my, it's, it's your children, they're not living in the city. That's where I have a problem.
Children's. I get that. Um, go ahead, Commissioner Ryan.
Buy some plots for your kids already. Thank you, thank you.
Some people don't, can't afford to go buy them twice a month.
I would, I would.
Don't start.
You suggested giving up your commission salary, so I think that'll go towards some plots. But listen here, since this is, um, like I said, this is a, this is a problem that we're facing. They are filling up, they, 52 spots filled up in a month. Like, I, I think it's safer to restrict it to residents only and then we come back and modify it and include everybody else. I, no, I think it should stay on residents only right now. And, you know, we cross out immediate family and direct descendants. And then we do it for tonight, for the 15th. And then if we are so compelled to bring this item back up again, to discuss, you know, in-laws and, and half-sisters, then we could do that. But right now, like I said, this is an immediate problem that we're facing. And let me ask you a question, Sean. All these non-residents that have been getting buried in here now, they, do they still get that exception since they're buried in the cemetery for one of their family members to be buried in there too?
Not, not the passing of the resol, resolution. No, they would.
Not in this resolution?
No, not at all.
But that would before.
There's no extension to it.
Before, yes.
Well, before it's open to anybody.
It's open to anybody.
Anyone could have it regardless of familial ties.
All right. So listen, I'd like to make a motion for item 9.4 on the consent agenda to restrict it back to just residents only and to restrict the date to September 15th, being today, 2025 for, for the resolution. And then it can be open to modifications, um, down the line or if this item is brought back up on the agenda. That would be my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I have a motion for item 9.4. Commissioner Ramoli?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. All right, item 9.4 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I missed the second. Vice Mayor?
Commissioner Ramoli.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item 10, uh, bids and requests for proposals. We have none. Item 11, quasi-judicial and public hearing items, we have none. Item 12, first reading ordinances, we have none. Item 13, second reading ordinances, we have none. Item 14, discussion and possible action. We have fall feeding distribution event on November 3rd, 2025, uh, sponsored by Commissioner Ramoli.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so back, um, a few months ago, I had, um, a conversation with Allison Vlocks, who is, um, who runs Feeding South Florida. And, um, she had approached me through an email, uh, about supporting their cause. And, um, after discussing, um, some options with our city manager and, and our Parks and Rec, um, we came up with the idea that rather than just give a donation to them, to actually do something for residents here in Dania Beach. And that's to have a food distribution giveaway on a month where a lot of people, um, would be hurting because it is, um, um, you know, holiday season starting in, in November, uh, Thanksgiving. And, uh, it just seemed to be the perfect thing to do, um, for Dania Beach residents only. Uh, and that was my big stipulation is I just didn't want to give some money to an organization and have them use it in different areas outside of Dania Beach. So I'm asking this commission force consent to move forward with, uh, doing a, um, Feeding, uh, Dania Beach Day on November 3rd, 2025 at PJ Mealy. Uh, the total request is 10,000 and we can feed about 250 plus families. And, uh, we've looked at some different options of locations and we thought PJ Mealy was probably the best.
All right, do you have any discussion? And that is from your personal contingency, correct? Uh, Commissioner?
No.
It's, you were asking for the commission. Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion to, uh, pass item 14.1, Commissioner Ramoli's item.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Lellin?
I'll second it.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, item 14.1 passes unanimously. Next we have item 14.2, Prestige Annual Gala on October 11th, 2025. Uh, Vice Mayor Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm sure everybody here is, knows what the Prestige Club does. Um, we've, we've supported this club for, for many years. The proceeds that they receive from this annual gala, um, go strictly towards many, many youth organizations that they have, which is pretty amazing, um, the, the things that they do for the youth of, of the community. Um, you know, they host, uh, family events. They have the, we, right here in the city, we held three schools, uh, that we bring and do, uh, that's good sponsored and we do them with, um, the etiquette programs. We teach children how to tie their ties, how to set it at the table, how to, uh, how to use the proper forks and, um, and how to pull a chair out for a lady. They even teach them how to dance, uh, little things that the, some children don't get the opportunity to do in their life. And, um, you know, I've had kids come up and they have never even been to a restaurant before. So this gala that we, that, what they do is they, they sell, uh, tables, the table is a table of 10 for $2,000. Um, I'm asking the city that I can use my contingency. If anybody else wants to chip in on it, that'd be fine. Um, you know, they, uh, take the money that we do buy that with and it goes strictly, I believe, almost everything they get there is donated, uh, the rooms, the food, uh, uh, and there's, and there's a lot of people that come in or, I mean, large organizations that come in or, they sell in that organization, they run a massive hall. There's at least, I mean, how many, maybe about 50 tables they end up selling?
Yeah.
And they, they, people from all over come in to support this, uh, Prestige Club. So what I'm asking for is I can, if no one else wants to do it, it's $2,000 I'd ask, take it out of my contingency. If anybody else wants to contribute towards that $2,000, that's fine. The unfortunate situation is it's on, on our Oktoberfest nights. So we have to figure out at that point how, uh, what to do with that. Or we could, if we don't want to, uh, buy a table, we can talk, uh, maybe Maxine can talk to her and we could maybe do some other form of sponsorship with that money. Or, or, uh, if we're able to send anybody else, I don't know if we're allowed to do that or not. Because I know that we would probably be preferred to be at the Oktoberfest.
One of the things that, through the mayor, um, my suggestion would be to really donate that to your volunteer residents. Um.
That'd be a great idea.
I, a lot of the OIG, and this is something that Commissioner Lo Allen and I have been discussing and with, with our city attorney, and to best protect our city, um, make your donation, but donate those tickets to your residents that serve on the board.
Okay, fair enough.
You going to the gala.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. Okay.
Hold on just a second. Commissioner Ryan and then this first and then.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, no, I've been to this event many times. Uh, I just want to make a point of order. We, we changed how we, how we do our contingency funds. You have to have this filled out beforehand and everybody could review the backup. And then we have it and it could be on the consent agenda. We could pass no problem. And then, you know, we, we could join along also. So I just want to make sure that we follow that protocol that we worked so hard to change. And, you know, with that, I have no problem giving $500, but I, we can't just say that anymore. We can't just, we, I, I'm, I'm just trying to make that, just trying to make that point of how we changed our protocol of how we do our contingency funds. That's all. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to donate $500 towards my contingency fund toward that, but we have to have them filled out the proper paperwork. And, and, and then we have to bring it before, before the commission again, which is gonna cut us short in time, you know, because it's coming up to October 11th. So hopefully we can get this done by the September 25th meeting. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I, I understand that the rule and I apologize. I was away and I thought that I had filed out those papers, uh, before I put it on the agenda. So I could, I could, uh, table it if I had to. Is there, what? I could table it to another meeting to follow protocol. Uh, they don't need it right away, but, um. But it's, I thought it was done.
It's here.
Okay, so, so I, thank you. I, it's done. I have a, I have a special helper that helps me with that stuff. Maxine. So anyhow, thank you. All right. Uh, anyhow, all right, it's $2,000. I'm willing to put all I want to do with it. I'm sorry. 2,500, okay.
Commissioner Lellin?
Yes, I just, I just question because I know that, um, the issue, again, with the OIG and the Ethics Committee and all of that. And I thought it also applied to board members that are volunteers. Am, am I wrong, Eve?
It would be a reportable event.
Right. So they would also have to report it. It, it's, it's a, it's a same scenario.
It would be considered a gift, so they would have to report it under the state.
Right, because they are board members.
Form 9.
I mean, is there some, is there something else that we could donate the money to that would not be a gala? I, because I think they're really focusing on galas, correct? That's what it seems like they're doing. They don't, yeah, they, they, no, 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 it's this, everything that they've been questioning lately, where we, we've gotten letters have been the mayor's gala, the, um, League of Cities gala. It's all of these galas that they're questioning. And that's my concern. And I don't want to, I don't want to put anybody in a position where they're uncomfortable or they're, they're being questioned as far as their ethics are concerned. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if there is something other than that. I mean, is there a, um, I don't know.
I, I just wanted to ask though, according to that, I mean, they are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. If you just wanted to do a sponsorship to that organization for 2,500 or you wanted us to contribute to that, just to the organization, not for table, not for this or that, but because it's, it's, it would be for.
Yeah, no. And, and if I may through the mayor, we've, even with the State of the City address, we've had people buy tables and say, keep the seats.
You do what you will with it.
So you do what you want. So you, you can make a donation to, to their gala and they can do whatever they want with, with those, with those seats.
Then that's fine. As long as we can do that. I just, I, I don't, it, it seems like that's what everybody's targeting right now are these galas. So I just don't want to put us in a position where we're, you know, like I said, making anybody uncomfortable or feeling like they're compromising themselves in any way. If we can do a sponsorship of a table and then let the Prestige Club do it, they will. If we can do a sponsorship of a table and then let the Prestige Club do what they will, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Seem like we should be able to do that, okay. And so then we can still contribute to that from ours.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so I think we have consensus from everybody to contribute. Does anybody else wanna contribute? I've got a contribution from Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Romoli, Commissioner Llewellyn, myself. So all five of us will contribute, um, five hundred dollars each.
Okay.
All right, um, do we need, hold on. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And anybody else out there that would like to purchase a table on their own, any corporation, any um resident that wants to bring ten people? Uh, you can get ahold of me. Uh, they always would accept more people that wanna come out there. So I just started out there in case anybody else would like to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So are we good to go, City Attorney? We're all in consensus, we can move on?
Yes, thank you. This has been a very long first budget hearing for me. Uh, we are have uh item fifteen, no appointments, commission comments. We will begin with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Um, just very briefly, I'm gonna defer pretty much anything else I was gonna say tonight. I just wanted to make everybody aware in case you are not aware. Uh, we did lose a um longtime resident of the city of Dana Beach in the estates of Fort Lauderdale this uh last week. Larry Youngens, um, those of you may have known Larry and Carol. Larry died suddenly uh last weekend and um it was very unexpected. And um, we're sorry that we've lost yet another. But they, that whole area just, it just kills me every time because there's, we've been losing quite a few from over there lately. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, Commissioner Romoli.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief as well. Um, just two things. First, I wanted to commend Captain Pelisar again for such a great job with nine eleven ceremony. It was um a very, very moving event as always. Um, I also wanted to thank him for allowing my staged rite staff to come feed his people afterwards. All the, your officers and your volunteers. And there was one poor young lady amongst all these men. But she seemed to have a really good time and we did too. We had a ball just talking with your guys and enjoying a meal and giving back to what they actually do for us every single day. Um, and um, I also wanna thank Candido, Sosa Cruz, and also Sean uh for driving me around uh the Southeast Drainage Project and we also drove around Gulf Stream Road. Um, I had several calls from um from residents in the southeast section, of course, where I live, very concerned about the flooding and the effects of the current project and their perception that it wasn't working. Um, and I think we've calmed a lot of nerves, guys. Thank you very, very much for your insight and your professionalism. And I learned so much just from that brief thirty, forty-five minute drive, so I thank you guys very, very much for that. And one last thing I do wanna say, and I'm, she's probably not listening, but Principal G over at Olson Middle School, it was a super, super time handing out those water bottles, those kids were so appreciative. And uh, it it just was a really, really good time. So with that, thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Romoli, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it was a very productive meeting by the CRA and the city tonight. We passed the budget, well, tentatively passed the budget, our first hearing for CRA and for the city commission. I'd like to thank the residents for coming out today. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate appreciate you paying attention to what's going on. And for those who couldn't make it out here and who tuned in to what's going on. Listen, we work very hard in the city as a commission, as a management staff, as our city staff, and everyone across the board to to do what we can to serve the residents in the best possible way. And you can count on the commission to hold our our uh staff accountable. We do, um, you know, they hear from us more than they'd like to, I'm sure. But it's not easy, okay? With the decisions that we have to make are not easy and they're not for the faint of heart as well. There's a lot going on when it comes to a budget and when when we're come, when it comes to the economy. You know, it it's easy to compare things from five years ago to today. But there's so, so many other factors that goes in to the overall economy. And I appreciate the energy, I love the energy that that was brought here before us and where we get to understand how our residents feel. And I encourage you, and you could count on us as your representatives as a commission, you could count on us to approach the county for the problems that you have with the taxes, to approach our state representatives and our federal representatives to voice your concerns. That's our job, but keep that energy up and we'll keep that energy up with you as well. And it, we know it's not easy out there. People, the the economy is not on the ups and ups right now. And Dana, we recognize that, we had the foresight to see that we were no longer booming and booming and booming and booming. We actually controlled our height and our density. We passed it, what, two years ago to reduce our height and density while still remain keeping a surplus. No one ever mentioned that we have twenty-six million dollars in unreserved funds. We have twenty-six million dollars in unreserved funds. When you compare us to other cities, that's pretty darn good. We we are very financially sound city. And there's a lot of factors that we contribute that to as well. But, you know, the city of Dana Beach, by reducing taxes by little and and and, you know, every penny penny counts, I get it. But also your safety counts, your children count, the schools, schools that your kids go to count, streets that you drive on count. All right? So I just want you to keep that in mind. Look, I'm a lifetime resident, lived here my whole life, I ain't going anywhere. Got two kids, got one on the way, all right? I feel financial burden as well. But just coming up here and complaining is not gonna get the problem solved. So I feel, I I welcome you any to approach me, approach the city manager. Jamie is more than accommodating. But thank you for tonight. It was a good productive meeting, all right? We're here to do business, all right? We're not here to be social workers. Like all that other stuff that we do on the side is all good and dandy to congratulate people and give proclamations, I get it. But we're here to conduct the business of the city. That is our number one job with decorum and with respect for each other and for the residents. Just wanna remind everybody that. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna pass on my comments. Um, I think it's best I keep, but I have to say to myself at this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I will be brief because it has been a very long evening. But I do want to say something for um being able to disagree. Temperatures run high at times and, you know, there is, you know, there's a lot of um escalation of violence in our communities and our country. But I want you all to know that especially this commission, no matter what happens, that we should be able to agree, to disagree, to be able to say, I don't like how you're doing this. I feel however you feel and it is validated. But we also have to have the decorum that is required in these chambers. Um, and 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 I will make sure that as long as that I'm running the meeting, that that we will have decorum. We can have differences of opinion, but we cannot be disrespectful. And I am very grateful, uh, this was a challenging one and I almost, you know, ha had to take that next step. But I didn't have to. And I really want to uh impress upon our residents that, you know, I know that these these decisions um cannot, don't always, you don't always agree with them. But as I stated earlier, these are um decisions that we've had the benefit of having been able to talk to several subject matter experts in different areas. And so again, I welcome you to contact me so that you can get the understanding that you need. I just want to end by saying Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. We do have a large population here in the city of Dana Beach. And, you know, get yourself on and have a great time. We should be able, yeah, I love it, it's great. We we have such a great time and and so I just wanna say, um, have a great evening, everybody. Love your neighbor. And I wanna thank my neighbors who came out here tonight because as I was going down, you lifted me up. So thank you for uh coming out and being supportive for my cookies. Thank you and have a good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.